Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Thank you for taking your time to be here this afternoon and for this special meeting. Before we start the meeting, first let me take a few minutes to state why we have the special meeting today and why the meeting is called for. Staff and I received overwhelming phone calls over the last several days due to falsified information on different YouTubes and social media. All right, I was just reminded. I was stating the fact first and call for the meeting. But, okay, we can do that. I was trying to state the reason for calling this special meeting, but the city attorney said that we probably want to take the salute to the flag and invocation first, so that's okay, we can do that, no problem. So at this time, I would like to call for a special meeting. The time now is 5:21. A meeting now is called to order. Real call, please.
Mayor Wen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Fan West.
Fan West's here.
Councilmember Monzo.
Here.
Councilmember Wen.
I'm here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you very much. Salute to the flag. Today is going to be Councilmember Menzo and invocation by Vice Mayor Ho. Please stand.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction as matters of importance are discussed this evening. May the decisions made here to the benefit of all citizens of Westminster, amen. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Thanks to Councilmember Menzo and Vice Mayor Ho for the salute to the flag and invocation. Before I open up for the oral communication for agenda items only, as you know, today is the special meetings. We only have one agenda item that we are talking about, so please trust the council accordingly. And before I open up the oral communications once again, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to be here at this special meeting. First, let me take a few minutes to state as why this special meeting is called for. Staff and I received overwhelming phone calls over the last several days due to falsified information on different YouTubes and social media. These people also distributed, left leave at homeowners at mobile home parks throughout the city with the eviction notice. Eviction notice, that is very important in red. They falsify and propaganda, there's misleading information by referring to the study, a study, I mentioned again, is study item 5.2, which was discussed at the September 11 meeting. This evil act was brought overly concerned, overly concerned our most vulnerable seniors, residents who currently own or live in the mobile home parks. Sadly to say that this evil act, this evil acts carried out by our own city council members, Nam Quan and Amy Fan West, and a candidate by the name of Joseph Ngo. Joseph Ngo is sitting in the audience right now, as I see. I now call this special meeting, city council meeting, to discuss the truth of this matter. So at this time, I would like to open up for oral communication. Is there any one sign up for a speaker?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda. Unless extended by a majority vote of the city council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. Our first speaker is Dao Tran, followed by Wen Hung.
Dao Tran, followed by Wen Hung. Before Dao Tran speak, I just want to remind that we have the policies, the quorum and severity passed by the policies passed by the previous council, so please follow that policy and at the same time, please refrain from using profanity during this meeting. As I mentioned over and over again, we may have people, high school students following our meetings. Thank you very much. You can start now.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wonder why do we have this emergency meeting? Isn't it because of the fake news from Joseph Ngo, traffic commissioner and candidate for District 3, with the help from council member Amy and Nam Quan? This fake news, why I call this fake news? Because the meeting September 11 didn't say anything, anything about the mobile home and anything about rezoning. Then I can say this is the fake news, but why they have this news? This fake news comes from the true news, words in September 2016, under Mayor Chita's time. They have a zoning for Green Turn Mobile and Los Angeles Estate Mobile. That is the real news, but they say that from you guys, from three people here. So this is the fake news, and the fake news cause they scare the vulnerable residents to death because the eviction notice, they pass out. They are irresponsible people, so we never vote for that guy to the city because he already passed the fake news before he come in. And these two council members should be recalled because they caused the worries for the vulnerable residents. You clap, okay? You clap, okay? You see? And I'm calling Westminster residents to stand up for your rights, condemn these fake news, and recall Nam Quan and Amy. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Wen Hung, followed by Joseph Ngo.
Good afternoon, lady and gentleman. I have a subject issue, the missing information in item 5.2 on the September 11, 2024. Dear lady and gentleman, I would like to ask a few questions about the event on item 5.2 on the September 11 to 2024. This is a special meeting. I am completely unaware of this incident, especially in this meeting on October 9, 2024. Three members of the council member Mayor Chi, Wen, Vice Mayor Kimberly Ho, and Council man Manzo have tried firmly refuse to an explanation in item AB 1234, proposal by council member Amy Fan West and Nam Quan Wen. For review and explanation, I am very disappointed, and this disappointment make me believe that the accusation of the two young council members, Amy and Nam Quan, are very credible. Is there any hidden matter that is three council members above deliberately avoided to clarify? This November, Councilwoman Kimberly Ho will definitely be gone. Councilman Carlos Manzo will probably also end his term because if he did not serve the election.
Talk about the agenda item, please.
So on, the three of them will definitely keep this 5.3 decision. But thank you very much for City Manager Kirsten Gordon on Friday, October 12, 2024, announcing this meeting. It shows that the city know how to listen to witnesses and the people. Today, I come here with a belief in explanation and hope to live with the peaceful as a mobile home resident in the city. Ladies and gentlemen, I am a mobile resident in District 4, and I really hope for an explanation about how exactly item 5.3 zone is. I am only interested in the relocation of this area with a mobile home park, so I would like to make a few suggestions. Number one, this banning the city mobile home park will unintentionally create a lack of housing and many people. Six mobile home parks in Westminster City, even if a new apartment building is built, it will take at least one, two year or more. Westminster Mall is an example. Before Dao Tran speak, I just want to remind that we have the policies, the decorum and severity passed by the, the policies passed by the previous council. So please follow that policy and at the same time, please refrain from using profanity during this meeting. As I mentioned over and over again, we may have people, high school students, following our meetings. Thank you very much. You can start now.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wonder why do we have this emergency meeting? Isn't it because of the fake news from Joseph Ngo, Traffic Commissioner and candidate for District 3, with the help from councilmember Amy and Nam Quan? This fake new, why I call this fake new? Because the meeting September 11 didn't say anything, anything about the mobile home and anything about rezoning. Then I can say this is the fake news. But why they have this new? This fake new comes from the true news wars in September 2016 under Mayor Chi Tà's time. They have a zoning for Green Turn Mobile and Los Alamos Estate Mobile. That is the real new. But they say that from you guys, from three people here. So this is the fake new. And the fake news cause they scare the vulnerable residents to death because the eviction notice, they pass out. They are irresponsible people. So we never vote for that guy to the city because he already passed the fake news before he come in. And these two councilmembers should be recalled because they caused the worries for the vulnerable residents. You clap, okay? You clap, okay? You see? And I'm calling Westminster residents to stand up for your rights, condemn this fake news, and recall Nam Quan and Amy. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Nguyen Hung, followed by Joseph Ngo.
Good afternoon, lady and gentleman. I have a subject issue, the missing information in Item 5.2 on September 11, 2024. Dear lady and gentleman, I would like to ask a few question about the event on Item 5.2 on September 11 to 2024. This is a special meeting. I am completely unaware of this incident, especially in this meeting on October 9, 2024. Three members of the council member, Mayor Chi Nguyen, Vice Mayor Kimberly Ho, and Councilman Carlos Manzo have tried firmly refuse to an explanation in Item AB 1234, proposal by councilmember Amy Van West and Nam Quan Nguyen. For review and explanation, I am very disappointed. And this disappointment make me believe that the accusation of the two young councilmember, Amy and Nam Quan, are very credible. Is there any hidden matter that is the three councilmember above deliberately avoided to clarify? This November, Councilwoman Kimberly Ho will definitely be gone. Councilman Carlos Manzo will probably also end his term because if he did not serve the election.
Talk about the agenda item, please.
So on, the three of them will definitely keep this 5.3 decision. But thank you very much for City Manager Kirsten Gordon on Friday, October 12, 2024, announcing this meeting. It shows that the city know how to listen to business and the people. Today, I come here with a belief in explanation and hope to live with the peacefulness of the mobile home resident in the city. Ladies and gentlemen, I am a mobile resident in District 4 and I really hope for an explanation about how exactly Item 5.3 zone is. I am only interested in the relocation of this area with a mobile home park. So I would like to make a few suggestions. Number one, this banning the city mobile home park will unintentionally create a lack of housing and many people. Sick mobile home park in Westminster City. Even if a new apartment building is built, it will take at least one, two year or more. Westminster Mall is an example. Resident in the mobile park might be controlled before the city makes a decision. By the way,
Your time is up, sir.
Only have my letter.
Our next speaker is Joseph Ngo, followed by Michael Varengia.
Today, October 14, 2024. Good afternoon, mayor and city council, city manager and attorney. Tôi tên là Joseph Ngo và tôi là ủy viên giao thông của thành phố Westminster. Tôi muốn hỏi luật sư thành phố và quản lý thành phố về việc hợp thức hóa dự luật 5.2 đã được đưa ra vào ngày 11 tháng 9 vừa qua. Quý vị có gửi thư cho tất cả cư dân trong những khu vực bị ảnh hưởng về các thay đổi và việc hợp thức hóa cho các yêu cầu trong tương lai của nhà phát triển không? Quý vị có trình dự luật 5.2 cho ủy viên quy hoạch sang xếp trước khi ra Hội đồng Thành Phố phê duyệt không? Quý vị có biết rằng việc này có thể dẫn đến sự đối đầu với các vụ kiện tiềm ẩn từ các nhà phát triển và cư dân trong thành phố không? My name is Joseph Ngo. I am a City of Westminster Traffic Commissioner. I would like to ask the city attorney to the city manager about the legalization of the proposed Order 5.2 that was put vote on September 11. Have you sent letter to all resident in the affected area regarding the change and the legalization of the future inquiry of developer? Did you present Order 5.2 to the Planning Commissioner for review before bringing it to city council to approve? Are you aware that this could lead confrontation with potential lawsuit and developer to the city resident? Chúng tôi đã thấy cái vấn đề này là quý vị đưa ra trong cái thời gian vừa qua. 5.2 đưa ra một cách rất là bất ngờ. Chúng tôi cũng là những người ở trong những khu mobile home có thể bị affect và chúng tôi không hề nhận được một cái lát thư nào hết. Chúng tôi cảm thấy quý vị đang lừa đảo người dân. Tất cả những cái vấn đề quý vị khi đổi zone hay làm bất cứ việc gì cho thành phố, quý vị phải đưa gửi thư mail order letter to resident. First, and the Planning Commissioner have to approve before you guys voted. I see that you guys try to cheat people and try to get something, you know, just want to make something later you guys can get the money back or what to kick back. I saw that people say that, you know, you guys done planning and if you guys give the developer come in the city and they apply for the rezon. But you guys already voted for 5.2. If the people, they don't approve it, they may sue the city. So we need the attorney and the manager have to double check this one again. Thank you.
I will have a fifth comment. I will have a fifth comment to respond to that. The answer to yours are no, no. And the rest of the reason was it's a study. If you don't understand the study, then we need to go. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Nat Lane, followed by Hui Donetto.
Xin chào Hội đồng Thành Phố. Trước khi tôi phát biểu thì tôi xin trích một cái đoạn ngắn của ông Jason Woody. Kinh sô tần company đã phát biểu về kế hoạch phát triển thành phố trong ngày 11 tháng 9 vừa qua.
You should be honored to have them on your team. So here's the map of the mixed use districts. These districts were approved in 2016 as part of the general plan. As you can see, there's basically six various areas. Most of them along Westminster Boulevard, the malls included in this, Little Saigon in the north, we're calling the northwest district. This area does encompass some of your primary commercial areas, which is primarily dedicated to mostly at this point in time, retail uses. There are some other kind of non-retail uses, but right now it's primarily retail.
Thưa quý vị, như là cái đoạn clip tôi đưa lên, ngày 11 tháng 9 vừa rồi Hội đồng Thành Phố đã phê duyệt sáu cái area là gồm những cái khu business ở trên đường Westminster Boulevard mà thành phố sắp tới sẽ có những cái vấn đề xây dựng, phát triển ở đó. Và trong đó không có đề cập gì đến cái vấn đề mà các cái mobile home ở trong thành phố Westminster. Và tôi có biết là nghị viên Nam Quan và nghị viên Amy Van West, hai nghị viên côn đồ đã tổ chức họp báo chiều ngày hôm qua. Trong đó, hai nghị viên này có nói đến cái khu mobile home Green Lantern là sắp tới Hội đồng Thành Phố sẽ biến cái khu Green Lantern này sẽ trở thành, đổi zone và sẽ trở thành một cái khu mới phát triển và sẽ đuổi những cư dân mobile home đã ra khỏi. Thì tôi muốn xin mượn cái diễn đàn Hội đồng Thành Phố để nói với cư dân toàn thành phố rằng, vào ngày 28 tháng 9 năm 2016, hai cái khu mobile home Green Lantern và Los Alamos Estate đã được đổi thành mixed use zoning. Mà cái này là do Hội đồng Thành Phố của ông cựu thị trưởng Chí Tạ và ông nghị viên Thay Lê Diệp. Lúc bấy giờ bà Rice và hai thành viên nữa, tôi quên tên này. Lúc đó, bà Kimberly Ho và ông Chí Trặc Lê Nguyễn chưa có vào trong Hội đồng Thành Phố. Thì cái việc mà đổi zone của hai cái khu mobile home Green Lantern mà do, mà trong những khu Green Lantern này mà lúc nãy ứng cử viên côn đồ Joseph Ngo nói hắn ta ở trong khu này đó thì là với lại Los Alamos Estate là do nếu cái lỗi này là thuộc về ông cựu thị trưởng Chí Tạ là đã đổi hai cái zone này trở thành mixed use zoning. Và tháng 4 năm 2017 là developer nhảy vô mua liền và báo tin cho cư dân sửa soạn dọn đi. Sau đó thì ông Sơn Đỗ là chủ tịch Hội đồng của những cư dân mobile home. Vận động cư dân đứng ra tổ chức nhiều buổi họp mà cái khu Green Lantern này đã nhiều lần mời ông cựu thị trưởng Chí Tạ đến để mà nghe tiếng nói cư dân. Ông thị trưởng Chí Tạ là không nghe phô, không đến họp. Và những cư dân đó còn sống trong khu mobile home này, người ta rất là thù ông cựu thị trưởng Chí Tạ. Và đến năm 2018, ông Nguyễn Mạnh Chí, xin lỗi bà Kimberly Ho vô trong nghị viên Hội đồng Thành Phố trước. Và sau đó, ông Nguyễn Mạnh Chí mới thắng cử vào Hội đồng Thành Phố. Và khi mà những cái cuộc họp của những cư dân Green Lantern này, ông Nguyễn Mạnh Chí đã đến đây dự cuộc họp hai lần, mãi cho đến ngày 16 tháng 1 năm 2020. Là cư dân của Green Lantern đã thắng được Hội đồng Thành Phố là không có được bán cho các developer. Nhưng cho đến ngày hôm nay, hai cái khu mobile home Green Lantern và Los Alamos Estate này vẫn còn nằm trong cái tình trạng là mixed use zoning. Cái này nó thuộc về tối đù là từ cựu thị trưởng Chí Tạ.
Excuse me, are you going to let her speak for six minutes?
Do nên.
Six minutes.
She has six minutes.
Đây là câu chuyện mà tôi trình bày là hoàn toàn có thật.
It's my meeting.
Ở đây không có phải nói xấu gì.
Check, check. We need six minutes.
Bây giờ tôi nói tiếp. Tôi xin nói tiếp.
Six minutes only with the translation. Okay. You do your job.
I do my job.
You do your job.
I do my job.
You do your job right now.
You be quiet, please.
You do your job right now.
You be quiet, please.
It's because your.
Tôi có bằng chứng.
It's because your honey that you let her talk forever like this.
Không ai bị gì đâu tôi.
It's my, my.
Tôi là cư dân, không ai bị gì đâu tôi.
So you let your lover talk like this for six minutes?
Tôi không bị gì đâu.
Is that, is that true?
It's my job. I am running the meeting.
You didn't do your job right, so I object.
Hold on, let me explain it to you.
Objection.
Let me explain it to you. It's been, I always told them, they have six minutes and if they use up their time, it's their fault. It's their fault.
They have only three minutes.
They can't have more time.
They have only three minutes talking.
But they have total of six minutes and if they don't properly use it,
How come they have six minutes?
It's their fault, right now.
How come they have six minutes? Idiot.
Oh, did you hear me?
You are idiot. You are stupid. You're breaking the law right now.
That's okay, that's okay.
You are breaking the law.
I did not, okay? I told, I told people over and over and over again, you have six minutes.
What a crap is this?
You, I issued the first warning to you.
Come on, come on. Your people make a lot of noise and then you don't issue a warning.
I am running the meeting, not you.
Okay. If you don't, if you don't run it right, I'm going to run it. Stupid.
Okay, first off on.
One more time, I'm going to issue you the first warning.
You are idiot.
The thing that they said in the eviction notice was not true because on the meeting September 11, the council meeting didn't say any, anything about the mobile home. So Mr. City Manager Assistant already said that the zoning was 2000, September 2016 under Mayor Chi Tà, not this council member. And they blame, they blame three people right here to rezon. And that is not the record. So the meeting didn't say anything about, about the zoning. So that is really fake news.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I want to, I want to say two things. As I did before and I will continue to do that way, that I will allow you, if you have the interpreter, then you have total of six minutes. And if you don't wisely use your time, then you have no interpretation after that. So and if you don't have enough.
Let me make it clear. So the people come up here to talk, they can talk for six minutes and then just about like a 30 second, they can, they can use it to translate?
If they don't use the time properly wisely, then that's their fault. That's their fault.
All right.
They only have that six minutes and without the extension. The second thing that, the second thing that I want to, I want to let you know that I forgot to mention it at the beginning of the meeting. From now on, every meeting, I understand that we need to have a break to go to the restroom break. So what I'm going to do is every hour, I will take a recess for five minutes. So with that, I ask all the council members, please stay for the meeting so until the time that we need to take a break, then we do that. So now I would like to go back to the oral communication, please.
Our next speaker is Hui Donetto, followed by Gigi Vo.
Kính chào thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng và thành phố, thành phần viên Hội đồng Thành Phố hôm nay. Hôm nay thành phố phải họp một buổi họp đặc biệt chỉ vì họ cần làm rõ sự thật để cư dân nhà mobile home, đặc biệt là người già, không mất ngủ và lo lắng phải bị đuổi ra khỏi nhà. Thật là tàn nhẫn và vô đạo đức khi những người muốn ra tranh cử đã dùng đến chiến thuật đe tiện và khủng khiếp như vậy để nói dối cử tri để giành phiếu bầu. Quý vị tự hỏi đó là ứng cử viên nào? Còn ai khác ngoài ông Joseph Ngo đã liệt kê thông tin liên lạc của mình trong những tờ rơi được phát ra tại các khu mobile home? Tẻ hơn nữa, hai nghị viên Nam Quan và Amy West đã tiếp tay cho các hoạt động tội phạm như vậy bằng cách quảng bá tin tức giả mạo để gây tổn hại cho cư dân nhà mobile home. Họ là những nghị viên đã từ chối hiểu sự thật, từ chối hiểu sự thật, dùng khả năng hạn hẹp, phán đoán thiếu hiểu biết của mình đưa ra những fake new để đánh lừa cử tri và giúp cho thành viên băng đảng của họ đang tranh cử được bầu cử để họ có thể phá hủy thành phố hơn nữa. Mấy tháng nay họ đã gọi phá chưa đủ hay sao? Xin hãy sử dụng phiếu bầu của mình, của quý vị một cách khôn ngoan và bỏ phiếu cho những ứng cử viên xứng đáng để hai nghị viên Amy và Nam Quan vô tư cách, vô đạo đức này không có cơ hội đưa thành phố này xuống vực sâu. Thank you. Đã lắng nghe.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members and everyone. Today, this city has to have a special meeting just because we need to straighten out the facts so that the mobile home residents, especially the elders, won't lose sleep and worry about being kicked out of their homes. How cruel and unethical for the people who want to run for office and resort to use such a horrible tactic to lie to people to get votes. Which candidate was it, you wonder? Who else but Mr. Joseph Ngo, who listed his contact info in the flyers? To make the matter worse, Councilmember Nam Quan and Amy West were aiding and abetting such criminal activities by promoting fake news to hurt the mobile home residents. They are council members who refuse to understand the facts. Their ignorant judgment made their own assumptions to mislead the voters and ensure to get their gang members voted in so they can further destroy the city? Please, use your votes wisely and vote for the right candidate. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gigi Vo, followed by Tammy Hamel.
Xin kính chào thị trưởng và quý vị trong Hội đồng Thành Phố. Hôm nay tôi đến đây tôi muốn nói với hai nghị viên Nam Quan và Amy. Xin hai người hãy ngừng ngay cái việc mà hủy hoại, phá hủy thành phố của chúng tôi. Chúng tôi biết ý định xấu của các người và thành thật mà nói chúng tôi rất chán ngán với những hành vi và xấu, ý xấu của mấy người rồi. Trong cuộc họp ngày 11 tháng 9 vừa qua, khi các cố vấn có mặt để đề cập, để cập nhật cho Hội đồng Thành Phố về quá trình của dự án, nghị viên Nam Quan đã chọn rời khỏi phần quan trọng của cuộc họp và không lắng nghe về dự án này. Bà Amy thì có mặt ở đó nhưng bà ấy không hiểu gì cả. Bà ấy không xứng đáng để giữ bất cứ chức vụ dân cử nào vì bà ấy chỉ nói mà không biết cách lắng nghe. Bà ấy không xứng đáng, xin lỗi, đặc biệt là không có lắng nghe các chuyên gia để biết có sự thật. Cả hai nghị viên này đều giúp cho một ứng cử viên phát tán tin tức giả mạo về việc cư dân nhà di động bị trục xuất. Hai nghị viên này đã từ chối lắng nghe trợ lý giám đốc của thành phố về câu trả lời của ông trong cuộc họp vào thứ tư trùng tướng. Hai người đã vươn biết cái nghĩ quyết này là do cựu thị trưởng Chí Tạ và bốn thành viên khác đã ký vào năm 2016 mà. Mà sao bây giờ lại cứ gắng ghép cho ông thị trưởng Chặt Đi Chí Nguyễn và bà Kimberly Ho cùng ông Menzo? Mấy người làm như vậy có phải là thất đức không? Amy, bà đã thậm chí bà còn đi xa hơn khi cáo buộc trợ lý giám đốc của thành phố là kẻ nói dối. Amy, bà đã đi quá xa rồi nhé. Sao bà dám nói ở nơi trong buổi họp mà lại lăng mã nhân viên thành phố như vậy trước công chúng? Bà thật quá đáng kinh khủng, không thể tả được. Cur dân nhà mobile home bây giờ người ta đã biết những xấu xa của bà và Amy và bà Nam, ông Nam Quan rồi. Đây cũng chỉ vì mu đồ chính trị. Cho nên bà, bà mới hành động như vậy. Bà nên nhớ rằng gieo nhân nào sẽ gặp bà đấy nhé. Xin cảm ơn ông thị trưởng và ban tổ chức họp báo để và bảo đảm với người dân rằng tất cả chỉ là tin giả. Xin trân trọng, cảm ơn.
Thank you. Before I start, all the council members should be made to sit out here and listen to this. I see this guy decided to get up and leave because he's not interested anyway. Hello, Mayor Nguyen and everyone. Councilmember Nam Quan. Councilmembers Nam Quan and Amy, please stop destroying our city. We know your ill intention and frankly, we are so sick and tired of your behavior. During the meeting of September 11th, where the consultants were here to update the council about the progress of the project, Councilmember Nam Quan chose to leave the important portion of the meeting and not listen to facts. Councilmember Amy was there, but she did not understand anything. She is not fit to hold any office position because she just talks and doesn't know how to listen, especially to the experts to get the facts. Both of these council members helped a candidate to spread the fake news about mobile home residents being evicted. These two council members refused to listen to Assistant City Manager for his quick answer in the meeting last Wednesday and Amy went even further by accusing the Assistant City Manager of being a liar. Amy, you went too far. How dare you? In a public setting to abuse the city employee publicly like that? You are horrible beyond words. Mobile home residents know your mean and ill intentions. Thanks to the mayor to hold a press conference and assure the residents, it's all just fake news.
Our next, our next speaker is Tammy Hamel, followed by Debbie Schwabell.
Okay, I mean, pretty much what I, whatever. She talks under her thing anyway, so it's better she's not here. I mean, pretty much what's already been said. This is, it's wasted time, it's wasted taxpayer money, they clearly don't care. I appreciate you doing it because you're a mayor who's actually working for everyone and wanting everyone to know what's actually going on instead of those two that are just working for whatever votes they can scrape together. It's clear they're being coached on this stuff. They look at each other, they're like, you ready, you ready? Like, it's clear, this, his little outburst earlier was, I mean, really early compared to other meetings. You know, they're both on YouTube, she's talking over theirs, they're, you know, doing whatever they can do just to cause complete chaos. But one of the big things that really bothers me is the continued defamation of city staff. When is it going to be enough? She literally, just because she and he are too stupid and literally uneducated to understand the answers that they're given or just don't care because they're being coached to cause the chaos and pretend they don't understand, does not give either of them the right to defame city staff consistently. These people know what they're doing. They're the ones keeping us afloat. They're the ones keeping all this shit straight. These two are the ones causing chaos. When is it going to be enough? Is it going to take a class action lawsuit against the two of them? I hope, I hope they do that because then you guys can vote to have her defend herself and not the city and then hopefully she'll go bankrupt and just leave Westminster. Because that's all they're, they're, they're causing so much harm. People are going to get hurt, their reputation, they're trying to damage reputations because of this. I mean, this is the epitome of accusation is admission. They talk about bribes, they talk about misinformation, they talk about all of, you know, the names that they call the mayor, he just literally stupid and idiot. Could not be more clear that that is, that is what they're doing. It, it needs to stop. That alone needs to stop. City staff have to be here. Like I said before, we choose to be here. They have to be here. They should not have to put up with this bullshit. I don't care whether you like my language or not, that doesn't defame anybody. What they're doing is absolutely doing that. It's causing harm. There's got to be something you can do. You have got to advise her to do something. She cannot continue. Like, they can defend themselves, they're up here, they're council members. They have to be very careful, I'm sure, because they can't say the kind of things we're saying. Luckily, we can. But until she stops, something bad is going to happen. And then she's going to claim like, I had no idea that was going to happen. That is what, that's why she's got angry dude up here, talking smack about residents and wanting him to name names.
Our next speaker is Debbie Schwabell, followed by Tony.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Schwabell. I'm an 18-year resident.
Can, can you hold on a clock? The city attorney have a brief comment about your comment.
Yeah, just a brief response, just to say that that issue has come up and I have discussed with the council members that they need to be very cautious about the way that they speak because it can lead to liability. So that is not something that's ignored, so.
Thank you. The city attorney, you can start now. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Schwabell. I'm an 18-year resident of Westminster. I wanted to speak on 5.2, on the 9/11 meeting. The last meeting took care of that problem that we're here to talk about. As far as I remember and have seen as I was at the meeting, we did exclude mobile home park developments, mobile home parks for mixed-use developments and that was corrected from the 2016 issue that was brought up. I do live in District 3, so this is really affecting me, even though I don't live in a mobile home. The person who signed their name to the eviction notice, that really affects me because I am now a little bit afraid that this person may get in. And I agree with Tammy that there are people behind these people who are acting as mentors and just want to discuss killing our city. There's not too much more that I can say except to these people who are, who were in charge of the eviction notice, which Nam Quan tried to describe as a survey. I wanted to tell them that they should feel lucky and blessed to live in a country where you can get to do this kind of crap and you will still get a fair assessment and a reasonable punishment. Because where they come from, it wouldn't be like that. So they should count their blessings that they're even here. And I know that you guys will do the best you can to get out the information to those people who are affected that this was a big lie. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tony, followed by Sivo.
Hello. Hello, Mr. Mayor, everybody. My name is Tony. First of all, I speak the Vietnamese, okay? Tôi tên là Tony. Trước tiên là tôi không đồng ý. Chính thức là ông Bùi Mạnh Cường, từ văn phòng ông Trí Tạ lấy cái tờ này ra, fake news ra, đưa cho thằng Nam Quang, Joseph Ngô, Amy. Cái đó là vô đạo đức vô cùng, không có lương tâm, ác độc.
Can I put it here?
No.
Yeah, you can put it there.
Can I put it here? You tell the city. Okay, go ahead.
So, tụi nó là ác độc, vô cùng. Tôi bay đừng có, lấy mi chò này ra lừa đảo cho bà con. Không có ai mà tin tụi bay đâu. And then, right now, I talk English, okay? I'm saying about the Jita office and then talk to Nam Quang, Joseph Ngô, Amy, that the fake news put to the resident about that fake news. Nobody believe on them. So, I want to tell cử tri tất cả mọi người bỏ phiếu cho ông, cho Li Nguyễn Bằng Chí, Andy Nguyễn.
You can, you can campaign, no campaign.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Okay, you can say anything else.
Yeah.
But no, no campaign.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I know. Okay, I will hopefully meet the Charlie Chi winner on November 5. Mark Wing and Andy Nguyen and Carlos Menzo too.
Talking, you can talk anything else, but don't campaign.
Okay, okay. I don't know, okay, okay. So, số là tụi này là lấy mi chò là lừa đảo thôi. Cho nên là tụi bay là mơ là phước là chấm dứt mi chò này lừa đảo đi. Tại vì trời cao có mắt tụi bay không có che được mắt của ông trời đâu. Không bao giờ, không có một ai mà qua mặt ông trời được đâu, tụi bay đừng có làm mi chò này nữa, nha. Okay, so, I should have 39 seconds.
You don't need to use it if you don't want to.
Okay, that's all I want to say. Thank you, everybody.
Sivo, followed by Michael Verangia.
Good evening, Mayor Charlie Chi, all the city council. I come here as, like, middle. I, I am not on any one side. But, I mean, like, the people like live in the mobile homes. They've been there for a long time. And I heard that Jita was the one who did it 2016 to get it into mixed use. But I know there's radiant change and Doce was someone that have fought for them. So, I think Nam Quang and Amy Fang West and I did spoke to them that you guys need to do some studies. If you need expert, I will help. See if you can revert the reuse. Because you can result again to help the people if you do care for the residents. Because I know most of them are gonna, they all and they get used to it, just like people who stay there for a long time. It's not, you know, landlord have the right because they own the land. But as human, as, you know, courtesy and as a city council, as a mayor, that you get voted, get elected. And I know it's a state level too, so you can work together to get it reversed or radiant change or even they have to move in the binding contracts. You can fight for the people and see if in a few years, the interest rate or something that can compensate them so that they have peaceful life and they are not frustrated at their age. Most of them are very old and so it's a courtesy and a caring. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Before you call the next speaker, you and I, we learn new things every day. I was just advised by the city attorney. My apology to Tony. He was saying that if, only if the person who speak is the candidate who can't promote or campaign. But anyone, they can do it for themselves, they can do it. So, my apology to you, which I just learned now, and I want to let everyone of you here know that you can if you are not a candidate during the election. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Michael Verangia, followed by Roger Mintram.
Thank you. And here again, the two people who are responsible for this meeting are not here. Now, the other one's sitting in the audience because he's the one who backed that eviction notice. That's where it started. These two backed his play. He lied and they swore that he was telling the truth. So, they bailed out, they're going in the back, they're back there laughing, watching it on TV and just listening to a drink and coffee stuffing their face. But the last meeting, I watched as Adolfo, Assistant City Manager, tried to explain where this whole thing came up. And back in 2016, this was part of the general plan. Multiple times, he explained it to Amy. Apparently, it doesn't sink in because she kept asking the same questions. We've all seen that happen. We've seen her do it to the police department. We've seen her do it to the city manager. We've seen her do it to other people up here making presentations. Either this woman is too stupid to understand what she's told or she's doing this on purpose along with this guy. They sit up here, they yell back and forth, they complain about everybody else and what? They leave the dais when the public is up here speaking. That just basically shows you what they think of us. They might as well sit up here and give us all the finger while we're sitting out in the audience because it's the same damn thing. And I'm sorry, Christian, but there has got to be something to dock these people's pay for all the closed session and active meetings that they've bothered walking out of for whatever reason. There's no reason they can't sit up here. If you're just back there stuffing your face or drinking coffee, too bad, should have done that before the meeting. But they get up and they walk out, they don't want to listen to anybody out here. Their buddy's sitting out there in the audience, he's probably laughing his ass off that everybody's complaining about the eviction notice that he sent out. His name is on the eviction notice. That's where the blame goes. He has no business running for a seat on this council, let alone being elected. And he's not the only one. There's others out there that are running that these two are backing because they want to flip control of the council. And what I worry about is we'll lose our city manager, we'll lose our assistant city manager. And these are the kind of things that they send out. This is nothing but BS that's put together by their handler.
Good evening, Roger Mintram, resident of Westminster. It's obviously really unfortunate that we're even here in the first place. These two council members continuously waste our time and it's not even wasting our time, it's wasting our lives. Realistically, think about it. They're wasting our lives. Every time they squabble and back and forth, it's just, the adjective to describe it is just crazy. I think this situation is fortunate for the voters. And I don't even know, Joseph No, is he running for District 2 against 3? Hello, people. Strike this guy off your ballot because it's obvious who not to vote for. So thank you for showing us who not to vote for. And these two being gone right after the mayor asks them to not leave the dais, he's flipping you off right now. He's, he's just a middle finger in your face. And it's, it's just totally, it's just totally uncalled for. And them leaving the room, it just shows their colors. Why would you believe them? And the meeting, the 9/11 meeting, that entire presentation, I made note of it, I spoke to people that were sitting around me. I said, "Look, Nam Quan left for that entire presentation." The cameras are probably on the presenters and Mr. Ozada probably, whoever was doing the presentation, the camera was probably on them. He was gone for the entire time plus at least a half an hour after that. And as far as docking their pay, seriously, they're derelicts to even be here. Why, they can be, the question is, how many times is this going to have to be explained to them? Because after we're done speaking, you're going to have your discussion as far as spelling it out letter for letter and they're still not going to understand it. Are they ignorant? Are they stupid? Or is there some other evil plan going behind it? People, you need to ask yourself a lot of questions here. Why is this happening? Why are they doing this? Can you be that stupid and ignorant to have somebody sitting four feet in front of you and explain the truth in writing? And you're going to do it again today? And are they still going to argue with the truth? Are they still going to argue with the truth? And do more press conferences and call you all a bunch of liars? I mean, what's it going to take to show them in writing what was presented? They're too stupid to even go back and listen to the, the presentation that was, that was on the meeting. It's so obvious that they don't listen to anything. Look at the... Are you running my time?
I, I don't know why you have the three minutes there.
I got some free time? I wasn't timing it. Let me keep going then. Start my three minutes. Reclaim my time! See, that's another thing. And what's really hilarious is the meeting on Wednesday, when Amy was continuously going on and on about reclaiming your time, people go back and watch the YouTube. Six minutes, no, six hours, 16 minutes, section.
You have one more minute.
Okay, section. And she, it's so funny that she says, "Go back and watch the tape." Go back and watch YouTube and you can watch that... And Mr. Mayor, you've given her so much leniency that she was going on and on and on about giving her time back. You gave her more than enough time that she was asking for. You went to three minutes and then you said, "Go." You can see the green light on YouTube. You can see the green light go on when you said, "Go." And everybody needs to know that the mayor's the only one that controls this clock and going to the city clerk. So as soon as you said, "Go," and that green light went on, what happened? Nam Quan immediately interrupted her. You asked him to be quiet and not interrupt her, and then the shit hits the fan between the two of them. They do it themselves. They waste so much of our lives, something needs to be done here legally. Dock their pay. They need to be fired.
We have two final speakers. Casey Walbert, followed by Terry Rains.
Good evening, Council. My name is Casey Walbert. I'm currently the chairman of the planning commission. Just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. The reason we are here on a Monday night is actually the direct result of confusion and chaos that is displayed on a regular basis by this governing board, as clearly demonstrated already here tonight. We, the people, demand more from our elected leaders. We demand that logic and reason far exceed the individual political or personal goals of any individual. You are public servants and as such, the duty to be informed and educated on city business is paramount. But tonight's misinformation meeting is merely a distraction from the real misinformation, in my opinion. And the real misinformation, well, let's get into that. Tonight, you're going to spend time informing residents that mobile home parks are effectively protected class of zoning and protected by California law. And they're not going to be part of any kind of redevelopment. But the actual misinformation that's happening is suggesting to the public that rezoning the city for any kind of mixed use in certain areas is going to ultimately leave our city with control over development, when it likely won't. Now, that may have been true prior to 2019, when 2016 came out and we were creating some of these plans. But because of 2019 and the laws created by SB 330, the city will have almost no control over its development if we are not careful and don't create something that, and use a tool that we have effectively, and that's specific plans. That is the only tool left in our arsenal to actually try to control what is done in our city. Specific plans are super important. Any builder at any point in time can take any land use or anything that you zone and develop cheap, low-income housing with density bonus law on any zoning property anywhere in the state. By right. And there's nothing a planning commission or a city council can do about it. So you can spend a lot of time and a lot of money researching how rezoning the city is going to help when it likely won't. Until specific plans are created for every area. The Big Lots area on Westminster, the Ducks rink over off of Springdale. Those type of critical areas that predatory builders will come in and take over that land and by right build on it with no input from anyone in the city is a huge problem. That's the misinformation that I feel is going on here. And I urge the city council that 21 days out from an election, you stop voting on city planning issues that cause chaos in the city, that it be retained for the next council that comes up. So that way, we're not pushing an agenda or making it look like an agenda is being pushed by one side or the other or all council members. Take your time, slow down, do what's right for the Westminster residents. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Hogan, followed by our final speaker, Terry Rains.
Good evening. Didn't expect to speak this evening, but I wanted to address an issue in terms of just the structure of the meeting, which may help us to solve some of these problems. For one, I work with two lawyers and I have, one of us retired, actually.
I just want to remind you that if you want to touch on the...
This is specifically about how the structure of the meeting here can affect the way that these issues are brought up.
Okay. But it's also related to the topic today.
I'm on the topic in the sense of the structure, if I may. There has to be a way, there has to be a way to bring some kind of control into this. When they disappear like this, I'm not being served. I'm supposedly, this person's district, you know, I'm not being served. So there's got to be some way to do it. Both of those lawyers tell me that it definitely can be done. You just have to have the structure within the government here. The second one has to do with the meeting itself. I would suggest that we put together something like a Zoom meeting so that down the side over here, we can see each one of you. So we can see when a seat is empty. We can see when somebody is just playing with their phone or senselessly filming people. If we do that, then it brings an accountability to the city council, an accountability on these issues, an accountability on how they're behaving, an accountability to us. So if we could come up with something like that, I'll chip in a few bucks to buy those cameras myself, if that's what it takes. And I'm certain that there's plenty of people here in the city that will do that. But we have to have some kind of an accountability so that we know when we're being served. And we're not being served now. We're not being served when we have to come in for special meetings like this to explain what was explained to us just a month ago. I mean, it's a sad state of affairs. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Terry Rains.
Hello. The scope of this meeting must be limited to discussion and providing direction to staff on how to correct the misinformation of the infamous eviction notice flyer and decide how to get that correct information out to the community as soon as possible in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. Just stop with the BS political press conferences, please! Amy Nam Quan and Joseph pivoted their visual props and presentation at yesterday's press conference. Maybe they finally realized the map they were obsessing over had nothing to do with expanding the misused districts, but they still spewed lies and nonsense. That map merely identified sites where higher-density housing could be zoned for both inside and outside of mixed-use districts. In 2022, the 2021-29 Housing Element Phase One of the Zoning Text Amendment Housing Overlay were approved. Amy Nam Quan and Joseph have no frigging clue what a general plan is, a specific plan is, what a housing element is, what arena allocation is, and most importantly, that state law controls how all of these are created and implemented. Assistant City Manager Adolfo Ozada, the subject matter expert, deserves a medal for maintaining his patience and professionalism while explaining the facts to the two morons over and over again at the last meeting without losing his shit. Adolfo, you are a saint. The abusive staff by the two obstructionists must stop. I will fervently support any employee or group of employees who decide to sue the shit out of Amy and Nam Quan. Nam Quan wasn't on the dais during the entire discussion of the feasibility study on the 11th. He left at 9:06 PM and didn't return from that little break until 11:29 PM. Two and a half hours later. Amy left a few times, but even being present, she clearly doesn't listen or understand anything. They never read their agenda packets and usually avoid standing meetings with city leadership to assist them with questions about the agenda packet. If they attended every council meeting and stayed on the damn dais, maybe they would understand more. Nah, their little pea brains simply can't process information. The general plan was adopted in 2016 with Tita as mayor and the puppet master Tyler Dip was on council. Dip taught these two how to be obstructionist. He ditched that meeting where the general plan was adopted and often was absent or late to council meetings. Same at Midway City. Page 217 of the general plan, quote, "At the time of a general plan adoption, the Northwest District is a large mobile home community. This area provides a unique opportunity to create a large-scale development should existing mobile home transition over time. Significant lot consolidation would be needed in order for this area to see long-term land use transition. Additionally, the closure of mobile home communities is influenced by local and state regulations aimed at protecting the rights of mobile home tenants. Before any changes could be made to the property, significant outreach and coordination with residents of the community would be required." Unquote. The city must mail an official letter ASAP, not a mailer because it'll get tossed with campaign crap, in all three languages to all mobile home park residents and management with the correct and factual information. Hopefully, the cost can be recouped through legal action against the perps. No, no, Amy and Nam Quan go to hell.
Thank you.
I don't even know what's going on.
Mayor, we received one more speaker card from Kai Dao.
Sorry, you can cross out. I was gonna need a translator, but I guess no one's available. Well, here we are again. Like I said, all this commotion, press conference, and talking about, you said here, discussion of misinformation related to the misuse analysis related to strategic plan goals and objectives. I guess you want to pin this on the Amy Fan West, the councilwoman, or Nam Quan. I'm no fan of Nam Quan. But I guess you never see any fault on yourself or your group. To me, this is all about campaigning. You guys, this is the misuse, misuse of your position. You don't have any press conference, just Amy Fan West and Nam Quan holding press conference. What about yourself? All this conference, all this press, all this releases, all this discussion, YouTubing. You don't go to YouTube? You don't go on YouTube accusing others of things that, you know, city mayor shouldn't be doing on YouTube? See, this is a shame. And I feel ashamed, you know, you're crony. This is all about cronyism. You guys trying to position yourself to try to get the majority. So after the election, either one of your groups kind of have the majority, right? To run the city the way you think you can run it, you own it. You're going to be the king of the hill, king of Westminster. You guys is crony of Michelle Steele. You's crony of Sean Steele.
I just want to remind you, you are one of the candidates too. So you must not campaign for any one of them or talking about any one of the candidates.
He's not talking about his campaign.
Yeah, I'm talking about tactics.
You are talking about any campaign, any for anyone.
I'm not campaigning for her.
Right? So please.
And he's not campaigning for himself.
Let me just clarify. So if a candidate is coming up here and campaigning for office, that's not allowed. If it's criticizing the government, the general things that anybody can do, then that's okay.
Thank you, sir. I'm just saying, you guys are a bunch of cronies. You know, just trying to campaign for Michelle Steele using the money coming from Sean Steele. And you guys trying to install your crony to have the majority of the city council. Either one of you two groups going to win, still going to be Michelle Steele's crony. I'm going to call you out on that, Mr. Manzo. I hope you remember that. And I guess we counting on you, you know, to defend the city here from this cronyism. And a shame of him to compare himself to Ngô Đinh Diêm. He's not worthy to binh bồ cho Ngô Đinh Diêm. Comparing to Ngô Đinh Diêm, nepotism, nepotism. You trying to install your relatives to be your co-council. That's nepotism. You have no place, you have no, comparing yourself to Ngô Đinh Diêm, such a shame. So either way, we're going to recall Nam Quan. There's no way Michelle Steele going to run the city.
Mayor, we have no further speaker cards.
You're done.
We're done.
All right. Thank you very much for taking your time out and express your opinion. At this time, I think that the council can have the brief comments. I just said that brief comment, not taking so long about this. Number one, I want to restate it again. If you have the interpreter and you have the right to use the six-minute. And if you misuse yourself, I can't control the time that you want to speak. But if you misuse your time, then it's your fault. You can't, I will not extend beyond the six minutes. And this is not new. This has been going on for years now. So it's not newly developed or newly ruled or policy. As you can see also, that the second people that come up, they also have, they only use only three minutes instead of six minutes. The second one is to answer Joseph Noe. I'm very disappointed as traffic commissioner that he doesn't understand what's going on. What he said, what he's trying to present it to us is something that totally, totally ignorance about the issues that we're talking about. Once again, we are not saying anything, we are not discussing anything about the mobile homes. That is what I want to make sure that we, and he has to understand, this is just a study. What does study means? If he doesn't know what study means, then he better go back and learn what is study. There is no law require us to have meeting with, or outreach meeting with the community before we do this study. We have number of studies over the years and that what it means. As I said, that starting from this meeting, I will call for a rest break or break in middle so people can use the time wisely for themselves.
Can I make a short comment?
Not yet.
You just did it.
I am still speaking. I am still speaking.
Not a problem.
All right? Please, 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 okay? So with that, I want to mention that I will do what I promised before we continue of the meeting. But I want to go to each and everyone, council here, if you have a brief comment about the public comments. I think you want to go?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So earlier, Michael Vee was talking about that we are wasting time of the city and being irresponsible. I just want to make it clear who called for the meeting. The mayor did. And this supposed to talk, and also we, Nam Quan, Councilman Nam Quan and I, did present. Mr. Mayor, there are...
Can I stop you for a minute?
There are disruption in the chamber.
Yes, I understand.
Can you please address?
Can I stop you for a minute, please?
Mr. Mayor, I have the floor.
Can I stop you for a minute, please?
May I finish?
No.
Yes, I do. I have the floor.
Can I stop you for a minute, please?
You just have five minutes, now the time keep going.
No, 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 no.
Look.
Let me tell you this.
Mr. Mayor, my time is running.
Sorry, sorry. Let me, let me explain, okay?
Mr. Mayor, I have the floor. May I finish? Then you can speak.
Let me tell you.
That's what you just told us.
At this time here, we are not going with the five minutes.
So basically, the mayor has five minutes and now he's not willing to have my five minutes.
And if it does, if they go over, I will stop.
He had five minutes already and now there's no time for me.
There's no time for the brief comment, am I correct?
Do you guys see it, the public?
Should I?
So the mayor just got five minutes to explain briefly, and now I don't have city attorney.
This is all according, please, why don't you say it?
Yeah. If you're responding to public comment, then we're, under the law, you're allowed a brief response. So that's as much as we're allowed to do.
Okay, may I finish? I have the floor. Thank you. So what I was saying is that the two, that the council, last council meeting, as you guys understand, Nam Quan and I walk in as a urgent agenda to resend 5.2. But the three council here, the mayor, Vice Mayor Kimberly Ho and Carlos Monzo voted to not resend, to take out the mobile home park and start talking about, or at least discuss about it. We brought it up twice, one at the beginning for walk-in. And the second time was to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And obviously, the thing is that they vote no. So we give them a lifeline and we throw them the lifeline to redeem themselves because we understand everyone make mistake, right, on their votes. But that was the two action that they can redeem themselves and resend the agenda 5.2. So that way, the public and the mobile home park can have a say first. That's all we're asking. Let the community, let the homeowner and the mobile home park people have a say first before you come with the plan rezoning the area and rezoning and change the general plan. I think that's unacceptable. So I want to make sure you understand that, Michael.
Thank you.
And then the other thing is...
Yes.
The other thing is, the other thing is, you know, I see that it's very sad that I know the senior citizens, most of them live in the mobile home park. And it's very sad that they don't give the people the voice first because those senior citizens are on a fixed income. Some of them are on, you know, disability. And they cannot pay for, if it's redeveloped into those townhomes, it's going to cost them about, what, four, five, $6,000 a month? How can they pay for that, guys? So we have to be considerate of the people.
Councilmember West.
The people have a say.
Councilmember West.
People always fight for the people.
Councilmember West.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Like you said, this is a brief comment to respond to the public comment, not to discuss about the item. We can wait until the time that we are for council discussion, then we can do that.
I understand, I just answering them, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the, from the council here?
I just want to make sure that we get to the facts, and make sure that we, make sure that we're here to explain to the community the true facts about what's going on in the city, the true facts about the meeting of September 11th, the true facts about what a general plan is, the true facts about a specific plan is, the true facts about the process, not fake and fiction that peddling lies over here, so.
Thank you very much. At this time, I closed the whole communications. So next is, we are going to go into the discussion for the main reason of misinformation related to the misuse analysis related to strategic plan, goals, and objectives from the September 11, 2024 city council meeting, with also the item 5.2 was called as a study section of a public hearing. So I stated what I stated at the beginning already. At this time, I would like to open up for the council to comment about it. Let me go around, let me start this time with Vice Mayor Ho.
Okay. First of all, I would like to ask you really quickly, city clerk, on 9/11, item 5.2, who were present during that time, 9/11, 5.2? So while you pull that information up, I'd like to, I will, once you have it, you let me know, okay? So, you know, here's the thing, is that I believe this is a tactic that they have, they are using to win the election. And I'm, it's really sad, because it's not, you know, it shows that, number one, is lack of care. I think that they use the cities, you know, senior citizens who occupy these mobile home parks. They do so without any regard for their livelihood. Many of them showed up at City Hall crying, they're very upset, but, you know, these guys think it's funny, and that it's gonna continue to put the blame on us. But number one is that, it's, number one is, I'd have to say, it's their lack of understanding. But, okay, so that's initially, I said, it's lack of understanding, go back and maybe talk to the city manager, have a, you know, sit down with her and go over and understand what you don't understand. But then I really feel like, okay, I don't think that's the case, because when we bring it up, like today, you know, for a special meeting, we have to like cut our day short, our workday short, just to be here. And Nam Kwan left, and this lady left, and then so, and then the person who was, who wrote or passed around that letter, that flyer, left, as we are not even finished discussing. So if he really, really want to know the truth, then he would stay here, listen to the people, understand, and make the appointment with the, with the city manager, and really sit down and understand. Because there, I know I understand, it's a lot. It's a lot to understand when you're new, okay? But I do believe that they do this on purpose. They want to waste the people's time, they use you, they use the people as pawns, you know, like as if they're playing a chess game or something. So I'm saying, do you have that answer for me, Ms. Ashton Orocho? What is it?
I do, Vice Mayor. So there is some that had left the dais and returned to the dais during the item. Councilwoman Fan West returned when the item started. Councilmember Nguyen left the dais as soon as the item started. There was Mayor Nguyen left the dais and returned throughout. Councilwoman Fan West left the dais and returned throughout. And the only one that did not return during the item was a council member, Nguyen.
Okay. So today, you know, that's the thing, it's like, he really doesn't care, really doesn't understand, really, really does not understand. I don't think you need me to convince you that the person, these people do not understand the agenda, and nor do they understand what's going on here at City Hall for that matter. So I'm saying, it's a waste of my time, waste of your time, and the time of the people at home. I feel really, really sorry for our city. So I asked Ms. Fan West and Ms. Nam Kwan, and what part of this do you not understand? 5.2 is not about a zonal change agenda. 5.2 is not even about any mobile home parks. 5.2, if I may, you know, did you even do your homework? 5.2 is about, in January, on January 24, 2024, the city council as a whole approved an agreement with Economic Planning Systems, EPS, to conduct an economic analysis, okay? And this is all relating to commercial area, okay? So what part of this do you not understand? I am so disturbed by the fact of, by the fact that unqualified people are elected to serve. And to serve at this level, as a stepping stone she uses, to twice run for higher office, and thank goodness she didn't get there, twice, okay? And so I'm just saying, please, don't waste our time.
Your time is up.
You're done.
Vice Mayor Ho. At this time, I would like to ask the council members to hold your thought about, discussion about this. As I promised at the beginning, we are gonna take a break for the, we are recess for five minutes, so that we can take a break for the resume break or whatever. And I do what I promised. So I will take the five-minute recess. And then we come back. At this, the time now is 5:30, I mean, 6:35, please get back here, 6:45, please. Thank you. Five-minute recess. So, roll call, please.
Mayor Nguyen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Ho. Councilwoman Fan West.
Fan West here.
Councilmember Monzo.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call with Vice Mayor Ho absent.
All right, thank you very much. Next, I would like to recognize Councilmember Menzo for your comments.
So we just, just to clarify before you start, we just, brief comments were-
No, no, we are done with all communications. At this time, we are in the discussion, so you have five minutes to discuss about it. If we are in the comments section, there is no need to have five minutes. I mean, it's just a brief comment. So at this time here, you have five minutes, and we go for first round, and if needed to, we can go for second round. And if need more time, then we go, you know, we need the majority of council decision. So you are now recognized for the five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I want the community to know, and especially the media that are out here in the front, in the back, I mean, my main concern over all this is the residents of these mobile home parks, and that's it. There are being, there, and all this nonsense, they are the victims. They are the victims in all this. And anybody who's watching this, that is, that understands what's going on, is simply, it's just political gain and using innocent people's mental health to gain. So that is my main concern, and what I want is to make sure that the residents get the facts straight. So I want to make sure, in no way, shape, or form, that I want to put the, our staff in the middle of any of this nonsense, and because they're the ones actually also victims of this, especially our assistant city manager, Adolfo, because I've known a lot of people in my life, and I've known Adolfo for great some time since being on the planning commission, even prior to that. He's somebody that I know that has the utmost integrity that I've ever seen. So it really bothers them that he was, his character, his integrity was attacked at our last meeting, and that is not something that I'm gonna stand for and I am not gonna forgive. So I just wanted them to understand, during that September 11 meeting, at any time that we ever discuss or mention anything about mobile homes at all.
So you're asking me, sir?
Yes, I am asking you.
So the item that was discussed on September 11 was brought to you, and it was an effort by staff and a consultant. Leading up, during the study, as the study was finalized, and then when it was presented to this council, during the entire month's process, not one- then when it was presented to this council, during the entire month's process, not once, zero times, zero seconds, was spent discussing mobile home parks.
Okay. And to refresh my memory, this was during one of our study sessions that we were speaking about, you know, like our, what do we want to focus on for areas of, you know, feasibility study we had. And I know that we had multiple locations throughout the city where we discussed specific plans.
Correct.
And can you remind me how many time, how many of those areas, because I remember there was more than one, there was quite a few areas that we spoke about?
Correct. So, as been stated in the past, the general plan update of 2016 created mixed-use districts.
Yes.
And as part of our strategic plan effort that the city manager brought forth to the city over the last three years, we have talked about the mixed-use districts in a presentation format with the previous council once, and with this council on May 10th. And on May 10th, we showed this council eight and a half, eight and a half by 11, full-page slides of each mixed-use district. And at that time, there was discussion about mixed-use district number, whatever, has a mobile home park in it. This other one has a mobile home park in it. And that ultimately led to a prioritization of specific plans. And that was also, there was a receive and, there was a receive and file action unanimously on May 10th, to receive and file that report that covered these items.
And what specific areas that we say, these are the ones we want to start on with the specific plan, to do a specific plan?
I have the presentation from that night that Ryan can pull up, so we can go to the, to the priority list.
Priority list of specific plans.
I have the presentation from May 10th. I also have the presentation from September 11th, if anybody wants to refer to those. So, Ryan's going to go ahead and pull those up.
Excuse me, Mayor Ho.
You have, you have 20, 25 seconds, and you can go ahead and ask question, and the presentation from the staff is different.
Okay. Yeah, just answer those questions, and which areas they were, and also how we voted on that. And also, our housing element. What about our housing element? Did we address mobile home parks?
Sure. So, can we pull the presentation?
Okay. At this time here, it's staff time for the presentation.
It'll be, so I'm just going to hit on some slides that were brought up during this initial conversation. Go back to the part, to all of them. To one. So, this is the present, go back to the master one. The one that shows the citywide one. So, the general plan map that is seen there, that's a product of 2016. Mayor Tretaw, at the time, he was our mayor, and that council adopted the general plan effort. It was a $1 million effort, extensive outreach, thousands and thousands of people, emails, text messages, led to the development of the specific, of the general plan update. And that's a legal document that's been filed with the state of California. Every city in California has to have a general plan. Ours had lagged for almost 20-plus years, and we adopted it in 2016. In that plan were six mixed-use districts, as you can see the slide at the bottom there, identify as 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And then what we did on May 10th, and we had done this previously, but May 10th is relevant because all of you here were present on May 10th. And now Ryan will just go through briefly. We zoomed in to each of these areas. As you can see, the top slide shows one, the bottom slide shows a zoomed-in area. District 1, as you can see to the bottom, there is a mobile home park there. We talked about that on May 10th. Next one. District 2, we call this the mixed-use downtown. District 3, mixed-use, this one's the mixed-use, this one's also a mixed-use corridor. District 4, we all know the mall site. District 5 is Bosa, several mobile home parks identified here. And the statement that was made on May 10th is that we were going to not do a specific plan that includes mobile home parks. We said that. We said, similar to the way Bosa Row was a project-specific plan that provided some of the protections we were looking for, and developed a really nice project, we're looking at other owners along here, not mobile home parks, to fund their own specific plans. 6. 6 is entirely a mobile home park, and I pointed that out during the presentation. Now, the prioritization that this council received and filed is the next slide, and this is the list of them. So, we broke up the District 2 into 2, that's why it came up twice. And I vividly remember Vice Mayor Ho saying, we got to name it something different, because it's a little confusing the way it's named. And we agreed that when we actually go and do the outreach, do the environmental studies for each of these, that we would name it appropriately, let the whole world know that there's a study that's going to take place. We also stated that you can't do all these at once, because they just confuse the whole world, and we don't have the money for that. No city has the money to do every specific plan at the same time. So, this list was presented, along with the exhibits I just displayed, and it was a receive and file action, unanimous receive and file for, for this. And this is the priority list. I think that's where your statement ended.
Who were present?
Everyone voted on this, all five.
Who are everyone? Everybody on this council?
Vice Mayor Ho.
I'm sorry, just wanted to...
On May 10th, all of you voted to receive and file this item. The whole point was, we had presented this mixed-use district to the previous council. As part of our strategic plan, we have some new faces on the council. We wanted to make sure that they were brought on board and not surprised by anything, so we brought this almost same presentation, again, on May 10th, for the purposes of getting everybody's comments. And there were no changes made to what the previous council had voted on. This is the priority list. We are now moving forward towards trying to build out strategic, specific plans for the downtown district. That's kind of our work. That's our next step.
Is that May 10, 2023?
May, may I ask, may I ask, council, your time is up already, by the way. May I ask the council, at this time, staff present us with the presentation, and if you have question, please note it out, and then, you know, when it's come to your turn for the second round, then you can ask all those questions, please. So, just keep going with the presentation, please.
I had one more point that I, that was left, and it has to do with the housing element. The housing element was adopted by the city and ratified by HDL, Housing Development in Sacramento. It's a huge accomplishment to get your housing element adopted for the RENA cycle. We all know about the RENA cycle. Sacramento's essentially expecting us to plan for a lot of residential in each of our cities throughout the state. There are a lot of cities that are nowhere near being able to deliver an adopted housing element. We are one of the half, less than half, I would just say. So, we're very excited about that, because if we don't have a housing element adopted, then the builder's remedy kicks in, which essentially means that we have zero control, local, zero local control. So, this is a huge thing, that we have a housing element adopted. Now, here's the main important point, because everything is about mobile home parks. And I've worked for 20 years to protect mobile home parks when they were almost going to be demolished by the 405 projects, so I take this very seriously. It would have been easy for us, easier for us to meet the RENA numbers by putting, putting housing in these mobile home parks. Zero additional housing was placed in our housing element in mobile home parks. Zero.
They were not included.
They were not included in the, in the housing element, and it still got adopted because of the good work of the staff of the City of Westminster to deliver the general plan update for the, to the mall and others.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mayor. Go ahead.
At this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember West.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so Nam Quang and I, we stand by our words. What we said are true, and the evidence speaks for itself, and they do not lie. And so, may, can you, Ryan, open to this map right here that you guys present on September 11th? Which is also in our agenda today, on Agenda 5.2, September 11th. Okay? So, while you do that, I'm going to read. So, District 4, on this map, there's Mission Dell Amo, Mobile Home Park, 9702 Bosa Avenue, Westminster, California, 92683. There is about 195 housing units there. Approximately 780 people will be displaced. Regency Village Mobile Home Park at 15111, Bouchard Street, Westminster, California, 214 housing unit in that area. Approximately, with this plan that the majority of the council approved, 856 people will be displaced. Rancho Delso, 9851 Bosa Avenue, Westminster, California, there is 181 housing unit. Basically, approximately 724 people will be displaced. Kensington Gardens at 9800 Bosa Avenue, Westminster, 145 housing unit there, and approximately 580 people will be displaced. For District 2, the Green Lantern Village Mobile Home at 14352 Boulevard, Beach Boulevard, Westminster, have 133 housing unit. There will be about 532 people will be displaced. For District 1, Los Aliso Estate, 5772 Gardengrove Boulevard, Westminster, they have about 586 housing unit. About, approximately 2,344 people will be displaced. And Los Robos Mobile Home Estate at the address 13100 Melanie Lane, Westminster, have about 114 housing unit. Approximately 456 people will be displaced. Approximately total of 6,240, 64 people will be displaced when the majority of the council, mayor, vice mayor, and Carlos Monzo voted for this plan that was presented on September 11th. And they never talk about the mobile home park that's in this area, was given to us on the dais at last minute, in a folder. And when I look at it, and I check with Google Map at the address, and I say, wow, where's this mixed-use area that they're going to do? Is this potential expansion of mixed-use district? These are the mixed-use that was never talked about. And I go, wait, wait, hold the horses. Let's have the people have a say first. Let the people, the owners, homeowners, resident, businesses around that area have a say first before we approve tonight, because with the approval, can you pull the page where it says approve, action will take if we approve it tonight? That's the last page on that slide. Ryan, it's on the last page of the slide, on September 11th.
I don't know what she, I can't feel what she's showing.
Okay. It says if the action is approved, they will go ahead and rezone those areas. And you saw the map.
That is not right.
Please, please, can you go?
I have the floor.
And then let, let her finish.
Can you stop?
So, it will, thank you. It will, it will basically, she's just interrupt my thought. That's exactly what they want. So, basically, it says that it will automatically have staff and the consulting to go ahead, rezone those areas that you saw on the map, right? And then the other thing is, whenever we do any rezoning, we need the input of the public. And in 2016, they have the input of the public, because it's brought to the attention of the people that live in those two mobile home area, Green Lantern and Los Aliso. Right now, if you look at this mixed-use, it's total of six mobile home parks. There's four in Bosa area, District 4, Bosa area. There's one, Green Lantern, in District 3. There's two in District 1, my area, Los Aliso and Los Robos. And those are the people that will be affected the most. So, it's important to have the people have a say first.
Your time is up, Councilmember West, and retain, if you have any further question. But at this time, I would like to have staff respond to that.
Absolutely. So, Ashton, if you could, as city clerk, if you could please put back the illustration that was first referenced. Yeah, go back to the slide. She started off with the illustration. So, when technical studies are put together, each technical study can't ignore previous studies. You're building a story, you're building a narrative. Past information is important. The, I'll call it the purple areas, those areas are the areas that I just showed you, that you've all seen several times. The title here, and I will say one more time, on the six mixed-use areas, in the three years that I've been a part of the city manager's office, and I can go back to the 20 years I've been here, we have never discussed redeveloping mobile home parks. And we didn't during the study. We didn't in 2016, and we didn't during the study. Those six areas are there as a reference, meaning that they happened in 2016. That's it. Not one penny of consultant time was spent looking at mobile home parks in any of these areas.
Mayor?
What this slide is about.
I'm sorry. I'm just wondering if this could be translated into Vietnamese? This is a very critical part, because the whole purpose is to, you know, make sure that the elderly have good night's sleep. They're coming to us crying.
We don't have a translator right now.
Rough translation?
I don't want council with, again, but I don't want to translate it myself. I want somebody, if somebody volunteer from their audience.
Mr. Long, do you, can you? Do you want to understand?
Mr. Long, can you translate for, due to the request from the Vice Mayor Ho? Mr. Long, you are, you are sitting at the end there. I know that you are capable. It's up to you whether you want to translate or not.
And then we can translate in Vietnamese later. So, go ahead, staff.
Okay, go ahead. We don't have the translator, sorry.
So, again, the areas in purple have been shown several times. They're, they're just referencing the 2016 areas. That's it. They're, this present, this, this slide is showing you what was there in 2016 in the color purple. And then, as part of the analysis, we looked at commercial districts in the city. Some of these commercial districts are next to the original districts. That's why it's an expansion. And that's as simple as I can put it. There was zero discussion on numbers of mobile home parks, number of parks. I don't even know how many mobile home parks are in the city, because we've never talked about mobile home parks. We simply said, if we want to focus on the top-left corner, in that mixed-use area, you have a property adjacent to it that's a commercial property that's dilapidated, that could benefit from mixed-use expansion. That would be, in this particular case, the Ice Palace, the Ice Frink area. And if you look at the other areas in there, in here that are blue, these are the areas we're looking at expanding. That's where our staff spent time looking at opportunities. We did not spend time looking at opportunities in mobile home parks. We did not.
Period.
Period. Now, if we go to the last slide, I don't know how we get approval out of this last slide. Further analysis and refinement. Staff, city manager has a very limited amount of authority when it comes to policy. That's your job. This slide simply says, we're going to bring back more information so that council can further understand the next step. This is not an approval, because there is no project. This wasn't publicly noticed, this is, this didn't go through the Planning Commission, this is, we're not asking for anything other than, did you read the study, and do you support the study? Do you want us to keep looking at economic development opportunities in the city? That's it. There is no approval. I don't see an approval on any of these bullets, so I don't understand how I can answer that last statement.
So, nobody's going to be, nobody's getting evicted?
Nobody's being evicted. We've never looked at mobile home parks. We've never discussed it, not for one second in the last three years that I've been with city manager's office.
Council, once, once again, I just want to remind you that I want to be fair across the board, make sure that you noted out, noted out the question, and then we can go next. At this time...
I think that answers the questions that were posed. Councilwoman?
Okay. It's going to be me before Councilmember Nam Quang. First of all, I just want to come back at the last meeting. I know that you're doing the work for the City of Westminster, and your credibility is very important to the city. And at the last meeting, we have, we'd have no opportunity to discuss about it, because it wasn't advertised. And so, we have to brief about it. But at the same time, when I asked you a question, is it related to mobile home parks? Would we discuss the item 5.2, anything related to mobile home parks? And I know that you responded to that, and then also, it's surprised to me that the Councilmember West called you a liar. It's very important... It's very important for you to clarify yourself today, uh, what you want to say about it.
Well, I will, I will say I was taken back by that, I received many phone calls from colleagues all over Southern California that unfortunately saw that play out, uh, and all I can say is that my reputation is everything and when my services are no longer needed at the city, I'd be happy to move on, it's that simple. My answer that day was, there are no pending projects that involve mobile home parks as part of the September eleventh study, period.
Period.
Period. There's no discussion, there's no projects, there has been zero analysis focusing on mobile home parks.
I am asking that question again, I know that we repeated a number of times, there's no discussion about mobile home parks at the five point two study session, uh, study, public hearing.
Every document you see in the presentation was presented in the agenda report, all of the exhibits were in the attachment, which is the entire technical study, there isn't another version of that study, it is, it was attached to the September eleventh agenda. If, if, if a certain, if a certain illustration doesn't look familiar, then that means that the report wasn't read as thoroughly as it possibly should have been read. It's that simple.
With that, I can tell that you are not a liar as a councilmember call you.
Apologize Amy.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, um, in two thousand sixteen adopted, you mentioned about two or three parks, uh, mobile home parks was adopted as a mixed-use.
Disruption in the chamber, Mr. Mayor.
I, I am sorry, right now is my time, okay, please.
You're the chair, so there's disruption.
That's okay, it's disrupt, disrupt me, okay? In two thousand sixteen, uh, the, uh, several parks that was adopted by, um, as a mixed-use area. By whom? Can you identify who was the mayor at the time and then all the councilmembers on the board?
Sure, uh, it was, like I stated before, it was a one million dollar investment by the city to program and deliver a new general plan update. And it, it was a multi-year process that involved stakeholder groups, outreach, uh, events at the mall that brought out thousands of people. We won an award for outreach by the American Planning Association because it was that extensive of an effort, it was a two-year effort, I believe. So, uh, in two thousand sixteen, the, uh, and it was championed, it was championed by two councilmembers, by the mayor, Tretaw, and I don't know what his official title was at the time, but it was Sergio Contreras, may have been Mayor Protem, whatever, but those are the two individuals. And it was unanimously approved by them, Diana Carey and, um, Marjorie Rice was also on it.
Tyler.
And Tyler was on it. I, I can't remember the exact vote, but it was adopted under that council.
Okay, I have one minute left and I just want to make sure with you to, um, you answered to the people residents at the, the mobile home parks, uh, own or live in the mobile home parks. It was very surprised to me when I heard that Councilmember West that said the total of six thousand two hundred and sixty-four people will be displaced from the mobile home, mobile home park. What do you talk about, what do you say about it?
Well, the city has no authority to evict anybody. And we never studied, we never studied, we don't know the numbers of, of people in mobile home parks, mobile home parks are overseen by the state of California for the most part, we're there for emergency service response, and they tend to govern themselves, so we are not, we are not planning anything in any of these mobile home park areas in the city.
Thank you very much, I just wanted to let you guys know, I have still have twelve, eleven seconds, but remember, when I ask the question and the, and staff answer the question, it's also going to my time, but that's okay, I don't have any problem with that. So my time is up now, I recognize, uh, Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you Charlie. Hôm nay là ngày mười bốn, từ tháng mười năm hai ngàn không trăm hai mươi bốn, kính thờ quý đồng hương và cư dân của mobile homes. Chúng tôi là nghị viên Nam Quang Nguyễn và nghị viên.
I don't understand.
Amy Phan West.
I guess, I guess.
That's your problem, okay?
No, 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 no.
That's your problem.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think.
I can use my time, I can use my time.
That's correct.
So you don't care about all your statements?
All right, okay, let him use his time.
I just repeat it in Vietnamese, what Councilwoman Phan West just said, okay? Just don't interrupt me.
You do the same.
Chúng tôi có cuộc họp báo ngày hôm qua, chủ nhật, để phản hồi về những tuyên bố sai lạc của thị trưởng Chi Trang Lê Nguyễn và phó thị trưởng Kim Bê Lì Hồ. Những tuyên bố này là một phần của nỗ lực liên tục nhằm che giấu sự thật liên quan đến kế hoạch tái phát triển của thành phố. Kế hoạch này sẽ ảnh hưởng lớn đến sự tồn vong của các khu mobile homes tại thành phố Westminster. Vấn đề cốt lõi ở đây là sự thiếu minh bạch, mặc dù thị trưởng, phó thị trưởng và nghị viên Carlos Manzo đã nhiều lần cam đon thông tin quan trọng về dự án tái phát triển đã không được công khai cho người dân. Nhóm ba người này đã câu kết đánh lạc hướng cư dân và không thừa nhận những ảnh hưởng đáng kể mà các thay đổi này có thể gây ra cho những người sống trong các cộng đồng, nhà di động. Chúng tôi tin rằng người dân có quyền biết những gì đang được lên kế hoạch cho thành phố của họ. Cuộc họp ngày mười một tháng chín đã tiết lộ những thông tin quan trọng mà thị trưởng và các đồng minh của ông ấy đang cố gắng chia sẻ. Chúng tôi có mặt để đưa ra sự thật, đưa ra ánh sáng và đảm bảo rằng mọi tiếng nói ở Westminster đều được lắng nghe. Chúng tôi đòi hỏi có sự tham gia của công chúng vào để xuất phát triển thành phố này. Chúng tôi cam kết tiếp tục đấu tranh để bảo vệ quyền lợi của những cư dân sẽ bị ảnh hưởng trực tiếp bởi các quyết định vô trách nhiệm của thị trưởng Chi Trang Lê Nguyễn cùng Kim Bê Lì Hồ và Carlos Manzo. Chúng tôi đòi hỏi thành phố phải để cho người dân ở mobile home được yên ổn sống, không lo lắng. Chúng tôi đòi hỏi ba người là ông thị trưởng Chi Trang Lê Nguyễn và Kim Bê Lì Hồ và ông Carlos Manzo phải rút lại nghị quyết ADAM 5.2 gây phương hại đến giới cao niên và người có thu nhập thấp. Chúng tôi đòi hỏi ngay lập tức thành phố phải ra quyết định từ bỏ ngay âm mưu lấy đất mobile home giao cho các chủ đầu tư. Chỉ như vậy, cư dân mobile home mới được sống trong an bình. Số phone của chúng tôi để quý vị gọi liên lạc nếu mà quý vị có những thắc mắc, bảy một bốn, năm tám chín, bảy bốn năm ba, một lần nữa, bảy một bốn, năm tám chín, bảy bốn năm ba. I still have two minutes left. First of all, I just want to, uh, address that, uh, the allegation that, uh, Council, uh, Kim Bê Lì Hồ and Carlos Manzo, uh, just, uh, said that, uh, we are wasting, you know, people's time. I just want to make it clear that this emergency meeting was called by Chi Trang Lê Nguyễn, not us. And tonight, I have to beg my babysitter to look after my, my two kids, and they have to skip their, their swimming class and their martial art class for me to, to attend this meeting. So that's a shame, okay, so whatever that it came to, you guys, and then you call for emergency meeting, this is the meeting that I am expecting for the next two weeks. I already talked about this, I tried to talk you guys into this, we're going to have a meeting like this, discussion, and you guys three times voted it down, am I right?
That's correct.
So then you are always talking about saving the money for the city, and then you are wasting the time and the money on this kind of what? An accessory meeting?
They're covering their tracks.
So it's, it's just like you, you are, yes, you are right, you just have this meeting to, to cover, uh, covering up your, your butt. Man, this is such a shame, that's why I call you idiot and stupid, mayor. Okay, I give up my fifteen seconds.
That's the exact quote from, uh.
It's not you, I recognize at this time, I asked you already, please, you jumped in several times. I, I already stated the reason why we have this special meeting at the beginning, I don't need to go back and, and talk about it. And this is very urgent for the people who are vulnerable, living in their, uh, in seniors who are living in, in their mobile home park. And we need to make sure that we calm them down and let them know that they've, they've safe about it and there is no misunderstanding. So that was the reason why we called this meeting.
Oh, we go for a second round, Mr. Mayor.
Please, hold on, it's my turn, I'm still talking, okay, I am running this meeting, not you, please, hold on. So, I, I just want to, to let you know that, that what it is, and it, it's been repeated a number of times today. Now, we can go for the second time because people still want to discuss about it, and I believe that, uh, Councilmember Manzo want to go before you, so I recognize Councilmember Manzo first.
Mayor, thank you, um, what we have here, anybody can see what we have here, it's just political stunts, um, but we can, we're not gonna waste any more time on that, we, we've said it enough, staff has explained it as clearly as can possibly be to an adult person, so, um, there's nothing out any more clearer that you, that you can explain it. I just wanna, at this time, I wanna make sure, like I said earlier, my concern is the residents of these mobile home parks and their mental health and make sure that they feel secure and nothing, they're not gonna be displaced as they're, these folks are saying. Um, so I wanna make up, right now, make a motion to have staff process and produce a press release explaining, explaining, I'm speaking right now, so I'm gonna interrupt you. I want, this is what I wanna have, make sure that.
We can't make a motion right now, right?
I can make a motion.
We haven't done discussion yet.
I'm making a motion, it's my five minutes, it's my five minutes.
Is that correct, Mr. Mayor, can we make a motion right now?
May I ask you to go ahead and read?
No, I, I, this is, I have the right, yes.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion.
I can make a motion, my motion is to have staff do a press release explaining it and also to make sure the residents of these mobile home parks, to make sure our staff mails a letter explaining the facts of what's going on, those are what my motion is gonna be because my concern is the residents and make sure that they are not being used as, they're not pawns in some political stunt and make sure that their mental health is, is, is taken care of and is protected. So those are my motions that I want us to do. And that is the responsible thing as a city that we, we make our residents our secure, protect our residents, so we need to make sure that they're getting the correct information. And I think that's the responsible thing for a city to do, so that's gonna be, that's my motion, that's what I wanna do.
I don't, I don't need to call for the second at this time because I want to go ahead and, I, I recognize your motion.
Okay.
Uh, but I want to go ahead and finish the second round. Uh, at this time, I recognize, uh, Councilmember West, go ahead, five minutes, please. Reset the clock to five minutes, please, Madam Clerk.
So basically, um, I know that eminent domain, it's only used when it's necessary, the last resort, right? It's like a nuclear bomb, and it's a tool that when a city feel that it is a, there's a threat, they use eminent domain. So the law allow the city and state and local agency to have power to use eminent domain for public benefits, and that's the only time that they can do it, uh, when it's qualified for public benefit, like bringing tax dollars to the city, then when they come to the court, of course, the city will have that power of eminent domain in those mixed-use area. So let me give you example for the city of Garden Grove, remember the time, uh, when they want to, uh, take advantage of Disneyland and use the outer corridors to make it a tourist corridor? And garden, from Garden Grove and Catella off of harbor, which you see right now, a lot of hotels, you know, shopping mall and everything to beautify, and what they use in Garden Grove was eminent domain, and those were private properties and homes in those areas. And they use that because they say if we use Disneyland, uh, as a tourist attraction off of harbor, then basically that will bring taxes, tax to the, the city and that will benefit the public. So therefore, they got approved, so those people, homeowners were misplaced, displaced for sure, one hundred percent, if you talk to any of them, they will move out, okay? So with eminent, eminent domain, so that's what happened, so the government can use that. And now, um, the thing is that, um, we have to think about this, those people on that map, okay, because of course, staff is correct, they didn't discuss that on September eleventh of that map or the mobile home that is on that map. It's because they want to pass it through to change the zoning ASAP because they have the majority vote here. And for me, I want to make sure there's transparency and let the people have a say, and I keep begging for that. Now, the thing is that we must understand the people that live in those mobile homes, uh, park, they have to move out when eminent domain is applied. So we have to remember those people who are on a fixed income, they're sick, elderly, and they get money from social security and disability, and the quality of life, um, for them will be diminished because they live and they choose those mobile home parks, they, they sell, sold their homes to go to those mobile home parks because it's closer to their Buddha temple, their churches, their shopping mall, and the areas that they can go for coffee or whatever it is, the community. That's why they live there for a reason, and if the city does eminent domain, then they have to be kicked out for the purpose of bringing more tax in to beautify, but they, the city have to deem that area as plight, as plight zone, that they can do eminent domain. And that's the only thing, and I don't appreciate that, and I think it's important to be transparent and to have the public, the people and the resident have a say first. If you look on that map, that map go all the way from one end of Westminster to the other and it overlapped a lot of single homes as well, and not only that, those businesses. So they don't have a say, there need to be a say for them, and we will continue, Nam Quang and I, councilmen, will continue to fight for the people to have a say and the businesses and the stakeholder in the city of Westminster. Um, so the thing is that I want to, um, uh, give an example to, the other most common eminent domain is when they want to expand a few freeway through your home area, that's happened a lot, uh, through, uh, government, uh, through the city. Uh, we've seen that, uh, in eminent domain through those, uh, freeway expansion, uh, but also, I just want to mention to the three of them, the three of you guys, the mayor Charlie, Vice Mayor Ho and Mr. Manzo, you guys passed that plan, and you keep telling us why we're making a big deal of it and why we're scaring the resident. Let me tell you, listen, this is a first step in every project, and this is a first concrete step that was taken in September, on September eleventh, and this first step, the three of you had taken is completely wrong. The resident, um, deserve to know and that we are lurking them to this issue. The people will be misplaced, displaced, and the thing is that you guys don't really care.
Your time is up, uh, Councilmember West. Um, audience as well as, uh, councilmembers, I hope that we are going to, you know, conclude this meeting, uh, pretty soon because I think it's very much that we can, we discuss about it, it's very clear, it's transparent, um, I just hope that we can, we can finish, so you can go back. But, uh, before that, I know that, um, Councilmember West brought up something is not related, is something that I, I don't think even need to bring it up here, uh, about eminent domain. I'd like to ask the city attorney to clarify this for us.
Yeah, we have to be careful in utilizing that term eminent domain because what we're talking about here with the planning, these are more zoning type decisions. Eminent domain is a, is a process where if the city requires land, uh, and they need to obtain ownership of the land, then they're entitled to do that if they have a proper governmental use for it, and then they're required to pay fair market value, just compensation for it, and then the city can take it. So if they're building the freeway and they need land for the freeway, they can literally take your property, but they have to pay you for it too. That's not what we're talking about here. And we have to be careful not to use eminent domain, uh, and, and talk about the fact that we're allegedly using it because people would be worried that, that, there's no discussion going on here that we're gonna take people's, um, mobile home parks or any other land at this, this is, this has nothing to do with that, this is talking about a zoning decision, which is where the city's not actually taking someone's property, they're designating the uses that are allowed on that property. So the general plan is the primary document in the city, and then we have zoning underneath that, specific plan in between that, but these are not things where the city is taking ownership of this land, we're basically setting forth a use that is allowed there, and then whoever owns that property can then redevelop that property in accordance with that zoning that we've established. It's their decision, they get to decide what they're gonna do with that property or not They get to decide what they're going to do with that property or not do with that property. That's kind of what we're talking about here, not talking about taking somebody's property from them. We have to, I only, it's important because we don't want to think that we're, we're doing that. There's actually legal liability there if we start indicating that we're going to take someone's property. So that's why it's important that we clarify that.
Thank you very much for the clarifications. At this time, I'd like to call Councilmember Nguyen, if you want to go for the second round.
I thought it was me.
I, I have the right to, to move around.
Sure.
So at this time, I, I, I would say that, you know, it's, it's very clear.
Okay, if you want to go first and then, you go ahead.
Vice Mayor.
Go.
No, it's Mayor's prerogative. He runs the show. Go ahead, please.
All right. Staff, can you pull up the, the maps that you just showed, Councilmember West? All right, thank you. All right, for the residents that live, that currently living in the mobile home park, I just want you to know that the, the pink, the pink color that you see on the maps, that included every single mobile home park that you are living in. So that's, if you see the legend lobby right at the left corner, I'm just talking facts here, okay? That's the areas currently designated mixed use. Is that true? I'm asking staff, is that true?
Are you asking if every mobile home park in the city is in-
No, I mean, like, right here, the mobile home park that included in the pink color. Am I right or wrong?
There are, I'm not going to answer right or wrong. I'm going to explain my answer.
No, no, no. I'm talking about this. Is that the designated mixed use? Those, those mobile home park that you see on the maps? So, okay, if you don't want to, to answer-
No, I, I will answer the question. I just, I just need-
Okay, so the map speak for itself.
You're asking me a yes or no question?
No, no, no. That's all right, that's all right. Okay, I don't need your answer anymore. Okay. So the map speak for itself, okay? So I want the, I want the resident to look at this map that, this is Lantern, Green Lantern's mobile home park, okay? So I don't want you guys, one day for one day, then your mobile home park going to turn into this, this high-density building. And then you have nowhere to go.
That's Garden Grove Boulevard.
That's Garden Grove Boulevard. You need to look at a map.
That's not Green Lantern.
I have my time. I have my time.
It's Garden Grove Boulevard.
Please, 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 please. We can, we can, you can respond to that later. Let him finish. Hold on, please.
All right, so let's get back to, to the maps. Can I see the map one more time? All right, what I want to, the message to the, the resident that are living in mobile home parks, that you guys have to speak for yourself. Councilwoman Fan West and I, we can only do whatever that we can do here, but we are the, we are not the majority. We are the minority and whatever the, the supermajority here decided, we, the, the city have to follow. So it's time that the resident, the people have to speak up. And you have my phone number, 714-589-7543. So that's my number. I'm currently getting the signatures to, so, yeah, just call my number. So I'm going to be there talking, taking on the question that you have. Okay, so I still have one minute and 60 sec, 16 seconds.
Please.
Okay, so I want to make a substantive motion. Let's see.
Not, not yet. I'm, I, we have, you can go ahead and make something. I'm not going to-
Make a motion then.
Go ahead and make something, but I'm not going to get the second. I'm not going to, yeah, go ahead.
But let's first see, is there a second to the original motion? I don't know that-
At this time here, we still discussion.
There's still discussion.
It's okay to get a motion and a second and then you can discuss whether you-
No, because I, when I, when I say, if I second it, I will make a modification to that. And I would recommend the modification.
Okay, so can I go back and make my-
Go ahead, go ahead and make, you go ahead and make your substitute motion.
But right now, we, we don't have a first, first motion, right?
No, not yet.
Okay.
But we don't, is there a rule that, a policy that we have to have the second for the first one before we substitute the motion?
Yes. So you have to have a primary motion.
Okay, so at this time here, if I can ask you to hold that so that we can go ahead and, because you got request not to-
Let me, let me be clear. Okay, so later on, you can let me make my substitute motion, right?
Yes, yes.
All right.
After, after the first motion has-
I return my 26 seconds.
Okay, you have, still have the transition second. I don't want to interfere.
Can I take your-
No, no, you can't.
You can't, do you-
No, please, please. You have already got the second time.
The Roberts rule, no, Mr. City Attorney, Roberts rule is that we can claim the time if we speak something different.
Please, 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 no, you can't. All right. At this time, please, go ahead and stop the time for Councilmember Nguyen. If you use it or you don't use it, it's run out.
Why does the Roberts rule, someone reclaim that?
Okay, I just want to repeat my number again. That's my direct number. Thank you.
City Attorney, can you please answer? I want to get legal rights.
Go ahead, go ahead, run, keep your-
No, we want legal rights. So City Attorney-
You are not recognized at this time, okay? You are not recognized at this time. You already have the second round. There are several people here have not got the second round. How can you claim your, your time when you use up five minutes? It's his time.
I'm taking his time.
No, you cannot. And I tell you, I repeated, tell you.
That's the Roberts rule.
Please. No.
That's the Roberts rule.
At this time-
Do you know Roberts rule?
Yes, I know. I know, I know exactly. My, right now, I'm running the meeting, not you. So I ask you to refrain, I ask you to refrain in speaking right now. You are not recognized at this time.
No, that's what the Roberts rule said.
All right. I give you the first, I will issue you the first warning right now, okay? Go ahead.
City Attorney, what's the, what's the law with the Roberts rule?
For-
City Attorney.
I, I want to ask staff follow up the, the question.
What's the legal, what is the rule?
Councilmember Nguyen present with the map, it's kind of, to me, it's confusing. He was mentioned that it is a Green Lantern, but it's actually on the Garden Grove Boulevard. Is that, I want you to confirm that, please.
I have to work with the chair. Because the chair, so I have to work with them.
Yes, right now, please, not, not answering, please. I'm asking staff. She is not recognized.
To answer your question, the board that was displayed by Councilmember Nguyen was a property located at the, near the intersection of Garden Grove Boulevard and Springdale. It is not Green Lantern Mobile Home Park.
All right, thank you very much.
It's a, it's a commercial site. It's not a mobile home site. It's a commercial site.
So all the, the, all information that they presented, all misleading, all wrong information, I can tell you right now. Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize Vice Mayor Ho.
Well, first I wanted to say that I guess you're making headway and you're reading Roberts Rule of Conduct. Prior to that, you didn't know anything. That's why your action was all over the place. You, you know, so it's, it's good. You're doing well.
You're funny.
Okay, so here, no one is being evicted. I just want to make it clear. A scare tactic is what is being used by the two. Amy Fan West and Nam Quang, you need to apologize to the residents of the mobile home parks and all the residents because, look, they're not, not all these people here are from mobile home parks.
Apologize to Adolfo.
And I apologize for them because I know they're not going to do that. Apologize to Adolfo. And I know Adolfo for a long time now, since I was, actually, I was on the traffic commission and Adolfo was the one who, who actually gave me the orientation. I could never forget that. I thought, wow, what a good guy. And still, until this day, I feel so privileged to be working with you. Thank you, Adolfo. And I want to say, Ms. Amy Fan West, you do a data dump as you do all the time, you know, information dump, I would say. You can't pronounce eminent domain. And so I know it's really hard for you. I don't know where you got that from. You don't understand it, but I think, I'm glad our city attorney clarified it. So for you to think, for you to think you know what you're saying, tonight's special meeting, you, we are addressing fake news. This is all fake news and I'm so sorry. I apologize to the Vietnamese residents. I would like our YouTuber, and I do have a lot of respect for our YouTuber Lan Vu, and I know you understand English very well. So if you can report the news as the, the way it happened tonight. And I would, I would like to, our, our residents to have peace, quiet, and, you know, mental health. I really feel bad and that's why I agreed to come to this meeting. This meeting is all about making, if we didn't have these people going out there making fake news, we wouldn't need to clarify anything. My Saturday, yes, I, I agreed to come and, and have that, that press conference at 9:00 in the morning, 9:30, 10:00 in the morning. And it lasted a couple hours and also to clarify, to make sure that the fake news is put to bed. But I know that they don't care because they just do the data dump. Nam Quang was not even here when 5.2 was discussed. And she left in and out, in and out. And the person over there, the candidate, obviously wanting to be on this board and on this council. I am so sorry if that person ever makes it to this council to replace me, I will be the first one to apologize to you guys because we would have a mess. This council is going to be such a mess. And so why do you insist on making an issue of this mobile har, mobile home park when it is a non-issue? I don't get it. So please, you know, I know you talk about the Bible, you hallelujah this and that and amen this and that. You know, please, if you can just show some compassion. You are dealing with, you know, the elderly here. Yes, you're right. They come here, they want to be here, they don't want to be evicted. And no one, none of us voted to evict them, okay? So these two are not capable of protecting you, okay? Because they cannot comprehend zoning, the zoning process. I believe they cannot even spell zoning. So how do they protect you? Amen. Thank you.
Okay, it's my turn. So it's five minutes for me, please. Well, first of all, I would like to apologize as, uh, running the, the meeting last time, that's Councilmember West called you a liar, which is totally unacceptable. But because we wasn't, we did not agendize the item, I have not got a chance to go further. So today, I would like to give you the opportunity to, to clarify it. But understand that my hand was tied on that day. So today officially, I wanted to apologize. Why do I say that? Because I know you. I know you serve the community and this, this city with dignity, integrity, and you are all for this, the, the best of the, the community. I know that for the fact. Now, I want to talk to the investor and the people who want to invest in the city of Westminster. It's very important for, for you to know that our city, Assistant City Manager is doing his best to grow the city, to move the city to the next level. And having that comment from the city council is unacceptable and that is not true at all. So please disregard that and please have, place a trust in him that he is doing the best for you and for us. Now, I heard that some of the council here said that, you know, Councilmember West, you need to apologize to, to our Assistant City Managers. Good luck. I don't think she is going to apologize because that's her nature. So don't expect to have that from her.
So they're hiding, lying up on it.
At this time, I don't want to go further. Today, the meeting, the purpose of the meeting today has been clarifying. And I hope that the people, the residents here in the city of Westminster as well as the people who live in the mobile home parks understand and feel safe, more safe about it and, and you don't have to worry about anything. I respect you for that again. Thank you very much. And at this time here, I want to second your motion, but I'd like to make a modification on your motion a little bit. Can you repeat your motion, please?
My, my original motion was for have staff put out a press release and also mail a letter to mobile home residents explaining the, the true facts. That's my two items. If you want to do some modification, let me-
I, I'd like to, to modify your motion. I will second your motion, but I'd like to make a modification if you are willing to take mine. I will combine everything in one, in one motion and, and, and action. First, I direct, same thing, I direct the staff to issue a press release to convey the truth about the, the study, item 5.2 on September 11th and provide necessary assistance to ease the worries of the our mobile homes resident, including the, the press, the press release and, and mail out the information.
Yes.
That's number one. You can consider that part A. And I would like to go for part B too. Part B, I would like to direct staff to prepare a resolution to denounce this fake news and the statement made by Joseph Ng to continue spreading the fake news. That's my second, that's part B. To prepare a resolution to denounce the fake news from Joseph Ng. The third, which is the C part, I'd like to ask staff to prepare statement to censure those involved in knowingly the spreading the false information, which is Nam Quan, both Nam Quan and Amy Fan West.
You're already censoring me, ready?
And if you are guilty of that, I'd like to, I'd like to second you.
How can you re-censor me again?
Second emotion, second.
So City Attorney, how, how can the mayor and the council here re-censor me?
We have, we have the motion and second on the floor. So now, at this time, I can go ahead and ask-
So City Attorney, please answer that.
I can ask Councilmember Nguyen, if you want to make a substitute motion, go ahead and make that.
Yes, I'm, I'm making it for Mr.-
No, 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 no.
This is my motion.
No, 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 no.
My substitute motion.
No, it's not your substitute motion.
It's my substitute motion.
He is the one-
I, I would like for her to make substitute motion.
You, you would like-
So I am making, I want to make a substitute motion.
All right, you, you let her take-
I just need to interject one thing, if I could. I, I hear what you, you said and A and C, I don't, I don't see an issue with those, but I want to clarify B. If, if we're talking about doing something right before the election, I'm concerned about that because you have somebody running and the council taking an action that could be construed.
Exactly.
Well, it's about-
As a campaign.
Well, then why they doing that? Why they spreading the, the flyer?
Yeah, how do I get the information to those? What is the best way?
What is yours?
Information is fine.
Yeah, that's what, it's about the information.
Yeah, it's denouncing a particular person.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's what I'm talking about. That, that would be-
And you can't censor.
Denouncing a particular person for fake news, that would be, might be seen as-
Make sure that you censor Carlos Menzo for- The person has the name on their fake news. If you don't let me do that, then what is your recommendation? I'd like to have that denounced.
Well, I think what you said-
You don't denounce the information without telling them. Denounce what? Who?
Right, no, I think you could identify that, that particular flyer and, and provide the correct information. That's, that's fine. That's perfectly fine.
I, I, I'd like to ask you, why that person can sign their name and have their name on it and I can't denounce that person?
I think if it were after the election, it might be a different.
No, he is, he is indeed a candidate himself.
Charlie, Charlie-
No, hold on. No, no, hold on, hold on, let me ask him, let me ask him.
So, you want to promote his brother-in-law?
You are using your money.
Let me ask him.
District.
City Attorney, go ahead.
So, that's why he wants.
Your recommendation.
Discredit Joseph Ng.
So, my recommendation would be.
Don't try to intimidate him.
No, everything you said would be correct. It just would take the person's name out of that and just identify the flyer and, and correct all the, give the correct facts. That would be a compromise.
I will agree with you to take the person's name out, but let, I want a clear explanation from you, how, why that person get the rights to put that on the flyer themselves.
You're just waiting till after the election.
And distribute this information and right during the election. And that person is the candidate and we can't do it. You give me the clear explanation and I will take it.
As a city, you're going to target the candidate. You can't target the candidate before action.
It's like I'm running for office right now.
City Attorney, you have to talk about it.
I'm running against you and then you trying to censor me.
Okay, I think that we will, we need to change the thing, okay?
What?
All right, we'll, we'll take care of that.
So, you afraid that I'm going to take your seat or what?
Uh, yes.
You're not capable.
Oh, my goodness.
You cannot.
All right, so at this time, we can, I will modify, I will modify with taking the name out, but with the information still stayed the way it is.
City Attorney, let me answer this question.
B and C. So, you okay with that, right?
No, no, no.
Are you okay with that or not?
Yes.
Okay.
City Attorney, can he censor me?
So, we have the motion and the second for the original motion.
So, the C part is re-censoring me? Can you re-censor me?
Please, please, you want to make a substitute motion? Go ahead right now.
Let me, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, City Attorney.
You said, you said that you let her make the substitute.
No, no, I have a question in regard of your motion.
Let him, let her make the motion first and then you can come back and ask the question.
Can I have my time?
No, right now, you can go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, so, City Attorney, C is censoring Nam Quang and myself. Can he censor, re-censor me? How does that work? It's kind of funny.
Yeah, no, but actually, we are running, is, running against him and then he using his money to.
Yeah, he can't censor us.
Councilmember Wen, let her speak, okay? Right now, you are recognized.
This is political attack.
You are recognized for.
I'm running against him.
Yeah, he's running for Midway Sanitation.
Midway City, uh, Senator.
And I am too, running for Midway Sanitation against the mayor. And he has his brother-in-law in here.
Right.
Mark Wen in District Three, so he take Joseph out.
After the election, it's not an issue, but right now.
Make your motion and shut up.
City.
Can you keep order, please?
Mr. Mayor, there's, there's disruption in the chamber. So, can you please?
Can I ask you to stop first?
You're the chair, can you please?
Can I ask you both to stop? If you ask me to control the meeting, then you have to obey the policy of the meeting, which is you are not going to cost talk each other. So, that way, if you are not, if you are not cost talking each other, then I will, I will be able to.
I am asking the City Attorney, but, you guys keep interrupting.
It's, you are not, I'm talking right now, so please.
But I was asking the City Attorney and he has not answered my question yet.
You are not recognized. I am talking right now. You, I, no, right now, let me ask you. We have the motion, original motion and the second on the floor. You are now, you are, if you are talking about substitute motion, then I will let you do that. Go ahead.
Answer yet, so, City Attorney, can you please answer that? The section B, C part, please.
Section C, yes.
Yeah, section C.
If, if the people at issue are running against each other, then I would have the same cautions, that we don't want to use the city council to be advocating, what could be perceived as advocating for or against somebody. That's all I'm saying. So, after the election, it's a different question. So, I would just say that correcting facts and saying those are incorrect facts and sending a letter out and explaining the true facts, that's all fine, perfectly fine. But if we're going to be censoring or denouncing in particular individuals, if, if members of the council are running against those individuals, that doesn't, that would not be good right before an election.
Thank you, City Attorney, for answering that. Okay, so, my substitute motion.
Hold on. With that, we need to, we need to clarify the original motion first, before you can substitute motion, okay?
Do you agree with what he's saying?
No, not yet, let me do one my job. You are not recognized this time, okay? You know that. I know, but I want to make sure that I am in control of this meeting, not that the people cost talk or each other. I have, unfortunately, I have to do that. I don't want to do it if we can run the meeting politely and we respect each other. So, at this time, I understand what you are saying, City Attorney. So, if, for the, for item C, if, what is your recommendation if I want to censure?
If that's still an issue.
He already said it.
After the election.
Just wait till the election.
Yeah.
I was thinking.
And also.
I think he needs to bring a dictionary with him.
This is not for the council, but certainly as a, as a candidate, any of the candidates can use their own. They can speak outside of a council meeting and say whatever they want outside of the council. That's not.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? With that, I would defer item C to after the election. So, at this time here, we have A and B. Are you okay with that change for the original motion? Or do you have any question?
Can you just make sure?
They have to take out a name, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I will repeat, I will repeat the, the motion, the modified motion if you, if you will. First, direct staff to issue a press release to convey the truth about the study section item 5.2 on September 11 and provide necessary assistance to ease the worries of the Mobile Homes residents, including what you said, that email out the, the letters to the Mobile Home residents. The second one is prepare a resolution to denounce this fake news and a statement made by, for, and a statement to continue spreading the fake news. I took out the names, okay? Those are the two.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, all right. So, we have the motion and second on the floor.
My substitute.
Wait, 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 let me, I'm not finished, okay? At this time here, I will recognize you for a substitute motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my substitute motion is I want to amend the implementation of the project that was presented on September 11th for six months until we, as a council here, can come to an agreement on what we will do with the Mobile Home Parks. So, I substitute motion.
No, that's okay. Can you repeat? Can you repeat if I say, if I hear you right?
I substitute motion to amend.
Amen.
The implementation of the project that you guys approved.
Please.
You guys voted on to rezone, okay? That's what the, the action will be, would already taken because you guys voted on September 11. That was one of the actions is to rezone those area, okay? So, I want to make and amend the implementation of that project that you approve for six months so we can talk about it and the people can talk about it regarding the Mobile Home Park.
Okay, I, I, I hear you, I hear you.
So, do you have a second?
I hear you clearly, but I want to make sure that this motion is valid or not. Can staff verify to me for me?
We're not rezoning.
Is, we are not rezoning on, at that, at that meeting for 5.2.
Again, you refuse to understand.
Please.
The action.
There was no vote to rezone.
No, the action that you guys approved on September 11.
Can you clarify that, please?
Yes, Mayor, there was no vote to rezone.
This is a man policy document, the action was taken if people voted.
There was no vote.
Amendment policy document.
There was no vote to rezone. So, therefore, there is no way that the, the motion is not valid.
And facilitate public review.
But that's okay. Let, let, let's see.
So, we're asking that the action.
I say a second to the substitute motion.
Pull that slide up for me.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor.
This slide up for me.
And there is a second, the substitute motion on the floor. Let's vote for substitute motion first, please.
This slide up for me.
Madam Clerk, call for the vote for substitute motion.
I have a substitute motion made by Councilmember Van West, seconded by Councilmember Wen to amend the implementation of the project that was presented at the September 11th, 2024 meeting for six months so the council and public can discuss regarding the Mobile Home Park. Exactly. I'll go to call for the substitute motion, Councilwoman Van West. Van West, yes. Councilmember Monzo.
There is no, there is no such thing that was Councilmember Wes is talking about. So, how can you vote on something that does not exist? There was no motion there. There's nothing, there's no project, there's no rezoning, there's nothing. The only thing that lacks here.
Why don't you listen to September 11?
It's his turn, it's his turn, please.
I have that. You stop.
I think this is the time for you to vote, not discussion.
Go ahead and vote.
Yeah, it's not time for discussion.
Yeah, just go ahead, vote.
Let's go, we know that.
Okay. The only thing that lacks is comprehension, so.
Come on.
Otherwise, no.
Just vote.
Just vote.
Just say no, we already know.
The vote is no, okay?
Just say no. We know what you guys are going to vote.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
No. I vote for her to have a tutor and so I vote no.
Mayor Wen.
It's really funny.
No.
Substitute motion failed, two, three.
Please vote, I will call for the vote for the original motion, please.
So, for the amended original motion, I have a motion made by Councilmember Monzo, seconded by Mayor Wen. This is to direct staff to issue a press release regarding the truth behind the September 11th, 2024 meeting and send a mailer to Mobile Home residents with accurate information to provide peace to the residents impacted and direct staff to prepare a resolution to denounce the fake news.
Um, Mayor.
We're voting right now.
I would like to see if you can amend or, um, Monzo could amend.
At this time, we are calling.
Well, I know we're voting, but we're, I'm gonna, I'd like to see if you could amend your, your motion.
No, it's already in the process. We can't amend anymore.
It's a motion on the floor and you just go ahead and vote.
City Attorney, can they amend the original?
Okay, I, I want to ask.
You guys already voted.
Because it just went too fast.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
So, for the part that says.
Okay, so if they can amend their original motion, can we go ahead and make a substitute motion, amend our, huh?
Yeah, what, what kind of rules is this?
No, that's, that's permissible. She's asking for some kind of amendment to.
We haven't voted. But we're already in the process of voting, like you said before, City Attorney.
We haven't started the vote.
We did, we vote the substitute motion and now we're going to vote on the original motion.
How come you guys just like a flip-flopers?
How can you guys just go back and forth?
Okay, so, I would like to see if you can, make the motion could amend. And number one is, I think that would be for part A. So, convey the truth about 5.2 and mail out letter to Mobile Home Parks only. And could you have it, of course, it's going to be in English, Vietnamese, and then could that be published on like Vietnamese newspaper? And then also, and I would like the bill to be made to split between Nam Quang and, and Amy Van West. Those two should be charged. I'd like to know how much it costs and it need to be.
You can't do that, City Attorney.
Is that okay or not?
City Attorney, please answer that. That's funny. This is so funny.
You can put it in the motion, but you can't make them pay for it.
Exactly. You're so funny, Kimberly.
Kimberly, you, you said that you are a doctor, but you are really stupid.
Yeah, you're a doctor.
I don't come from court.
You're so funny, you can't do that.
Idiot.
Well, I get in the motion, just answer already, don't be ridiculous.
We, we had to do the three languages though, right?
Yeah, we have to do the three languages.
And could it be in Vietnamese?
Yes.
And then publish it.
Wow, they really, really.
So, you guys can put it on the, 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 City Attorney? They can put it on their.